We're gonna get started, the whole meeting at 12:05, May 10, 2023. We respectfully acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of the Sushwetmik. Let's move to approval of the agenda, recommendation that Shushwep Hailing Center design be added as a late item under item 6F and that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for May 10, 2023 be approved as amended. Could I get? Malcolm, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Good move on to adoption of the minutes. Recommendation that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on April 12, 2023 be adopted. Malcolm, Ian, thank you, all in favor? Carried. Okay, we have delegations today, so there's a lot of enforcement in this front row. I've never felt safer. We're gonna start with Sergeant Murray McNeil from the Sickamas R C M P. Thanks for being here, Murray.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Here to talk about our fourth quarter report from January to March 2023, wrapping up last fiscal. From the page, please, Kelly. So with, again, contributing to safe roads, there's the traffic tickets, 34, 39, and 62 for the month respectively generated in March. And you see the previous quarter, or previous year, 21, 22, just about the same, 66 in March, more in February, and a little bit more in January. Five members working had an average of nine, so slightly below the standard that we set at 10. A total of 135 stats for the quarter, which was lower than in 180, 188, and 22, and higher than 108, 2020. There's more impaired drivers that we were dealing with this quarter, had four in January, two in February, for a total of six. And that's double what we had previous year, where we only had three impaired drivers for the same quarter in 2022. Moving on, we had no fatal collisions, always good to see for the quarter. Five injury collisions, only one was of any real significance. That was one on Mark the 6. We had a single vehicle off-road eastbound near Old Sickness Road on the TransCanada Highway. A vehicle went down the embankment and rolled. It was quite steep embankment there, as we all know. Some injuries, top four occupants, or some young ones in that car as well, but nothing too terribly bad. The other ones are all minor in nature, Highway 97A and Elliott, minor injuries, every single vehicle rollover TCH at the last bike. Semi losing control in the four lanes, and part 21 driver westbound. Vehicle rear ended another one. I was there for that one. She was all worried about an appointment. She had a Saman arm and was looking at her navigation and not the proper in front of her. So, yeah. Freaking unders, we had none for the quarter, which is very good. Hopefully, we continue that trend. There were three in the previous year's quarter, so that's an improvement. Theft of vehicles, there always is a couple of those to mention. January 4th, an attempted theft of a 05 Sierra from Clear Road. The ignition was damaged on that vehicle. January 10, we did recover, just made a little bit of news, an old four. I think it was an Infinity, if I remember, from 10 in accordance. Two suspects were arrested. They were given a court date. The vehicle was taken from a dealership in Kelowna. They had given fake ID, got a test drive, and then decided they were gonna make their way to Alberta. The vehicle made it to Sparta. February 1, 2001, F350 stolen from a business in Solskjaer, and it was recovered the next day in Seminare. And then we had a 20-foot boat taken from a storage facility, and it recovered in Tappan, finest the outboards. Someone obviously looking for the outboard engines there. And 2022, quarter four, we had three vehicles reported for comparison. So there's a profit crime totals, 2023, 2022, pretty similar, 19 total versus 17, so no huge large trends popping up. Theft of vehicles with more this time compared to two previous quarter, but the big one was the no brake engines. And then the next slide just shows all of our files for the quarter, pretty comparable, 424 total to 401. Nothing really jumps off the page, aside from abandoned 911 calls. For some reason, we had a bunch of those, and that typically comes in the better weather. People are out doing recreation, either sledding or out in their boats, and we get a lot of pocket dials, whatnot. And also people just driving through on the highway, trying to get a signal type of thing, and they end up dialing us. It's off the tower on the highway, and then they're on their way to Revelstoke or Seminare. Resources, Constable Adam Poitras just arrived in the D pass of this month. He previously worked in Saman Arm, so he was raised here in Sickamas as a boy. His father was a champion at some times, so his picture is on the wall in the elementary school. So, yeah, he's happy to be here, and he's a tall guy. If you're driving around Sickamas, and you see a guy that can easily dunk a basketball on me, that's Constable Poitras. He's about 6'7", so he stands there. Yeah. Criminal code chart approvals, we had two cases, we're driving, breach probation and assault. And we also did a search warrants in the quarter on a residence on compel, and we got two firearms out of that residence. That was in, I did a press release on that. It was a case between the resident in that house and another person in town. And then that led us to doing the search warrant and getting the two firearms. So that's the report for the quarter.
Awesome. Thank you, Murray.
Questions?
Good job, Murray. Go ahead, Councilor McKay.
Thank you. Is your new member gonna be living in Sickamas?
He bought near the airport in Seminare. And his wife is, she's working in EHS, and she will be working, she gets in Sickamas as well, ambulance station.
Oh, excellent. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilor Bushel.
Good job there, Murray. Thank you very much for everything you guys do.
Thank you. Rest the ground and listen to the next two presentations.
Thank you very much, Murray. Okay, so moving on, we have PC Conservation update from Eric Tykody, Conservation Officer Service North Okanagan Zone. So you'll see Eric's face around Sickamas a little bit more because he's stationed Seminare and works after Sickamas. Go ahead. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, everybody, for having me. And yes, as Colleen said, my name is Conservation Officer Eric Tykody. There are two of us now in Seminare after having nobody for a very long time. My colleague Steve Cook could not be here, but you happen to see a very tall conservation officer, just like Murray's new member there in Sickamas, that is him. I think he's 5'8", or not 5'8", sorry, 6'8". But today, I'm here to talk to you folks just a little bit about some bear issues that have been happening in the Sickamas area. And also to discuss, you know, kind of our ability to now service this area. Now, there's two of us that are very close by. So I'm just gonna see if I can get this to work here. There we go. So, what a conservation officer service, as many of you probably know, we are responsible for the environmental stewardship, enforcing of environmental statutes, as well as wildlife conflict response prevention. Our area in North Okanagan Zone covers Seminare, Sorento, Tappan, Sickamas, Malakua, Revelstoke, Enduvi, Armstrong, Vernon, Coldstream, Lumbee, and Cherryville. There's a bunch on there I did not list because it's a very gigantic area. But the main centers of concern for me and Steve are going to be Seminare, Sickamas, and Revelstoke. We have two other conservation officers that work out of Vernon that primarily looked after this area in years past. However, Vernon is a big beast in itself with a lot of their own bear issues, so it's primarily going to be myself and Steve that you'll be seeing out here. So just a couple little facts about black bears here. You folks live in some really good black bear and grizzly bear habitat, so they're on the rise in North America. The population, last estimate, I believe, was in 2016. They believe that there may be as many as 1 million across all of North America. In British Columbia, we have between 125 to 165,000, and that population is on the rise as well. But they're found across all Canada, with the exception of PEI, and this is an old infographic, because this presentation is not mine, it's from an officer that did it a couple of years ago. Even the areas that say that there's few, many more are coming into those areas. They have swung to islands in the Georgia Strait. They occasionally are popping up on the Gulf Islands now, where they have historically been absent. We have a very good climate for both berries as well as salmon, but the other big thing that I'm gonna touch on is they do very well with garbage, unfortunately. I used to work on the coast down in Mission, Cholac, that kind of area, CO'd down there for three years. And we see it all the time, where typically black bears will have between four, maybe five cubs, if it's a very prolific female. On the coast, there's areas where all four or five of those cubs may survive to their second year, which pretty much everywhere else in North America, that does not happen. Maybe one will survive to reach the age of two, and that's, again, goes to be how much habitat we have and the resources they have built. So the females will give birth in the den to, between usually three to potentially five cubs. They will hibernate with her until the spring. They'll spend their first year with her and then go back into the den in the wintertime. And then around their second, kind of April, May, that's when mom kicks them away. And typically, when we have bears that are getting in the garbage or doing things they shouldn't be doing, exhibiting habituation of food conditioning. Not always, but generally, it's these juveniles that are kind of around their second year of life. They're the ones that, you know, start targeting garbage and livestock and things like that, because maybe mom didn't have the best opportunity to train them on natural food. So habituated black bear, pretty common image that's all along online. I'm sure a lot of these fans from the BC Park might be able to find that. Habituation means a loss of fear from humans. They don't run from people. When they see humans, they feel relatively comfortable around people. And they're much more likely to come into conflict through mood conditioning. Generally, that's garbage, but it could also be bird feeders. It could be unprotected chickens and livestock, and livestock feed, but the most common one, there's an infographic coming up in a few slides. Garbage accounts for almost everything else you can add together. Garbage is much more prevalent, even with all the other attractants present. So food-conditioned black bear, getting some garbage. Bear that has become reliant on our non-natural attractant source of food. Non-natural attractants, again, include garbage, fruit trees, bird feeders. It's dangerous for both people and bears. Conditioned bears often are more aggressive towards people when searching or guarding food, much like a dog that has been given a bone and is hungry. A lot of instances of people being attacked by black bears is when they try and shoot them off food source. That bear reacts defensively to the food source and will blow up charge the person. Sometimes they get a swipe in. More often than not, the second that contact's made, that bear's run and hid, because all it wanted to do was scare somebody off. But once that happens, that bear is exhibited a higher level of behavior that was seen in us. A lot of people on the coast get attacked like this, and in the interior, but the majority of black bear attacks on humans, they are defensive. It's very rare that they see humans at food source. However, just because there are more black bears in North America, it happens more than grizzly bears. So, yeah, habituation, food conditioning, unprotected garbage, unprotected attractants. People allowing bears onto their properties because they like seeing them, instead of trying to scare them away, which we encourage everybody to when they're on their property. Fruit trees, bird feeders, beehives and chickens, compost and barbecues. Here's the infographic. Yeah, this is from 2009 to 2013. Considerably higher than anything else, 19,000 reports of bears getting into garbage. You can add everything else up there. It's not even half of what all the other attractants are. So going over just what we've had in Sickamas, we switched to a new system, unfortunately, so I can only go back as far as the last year. But Sickamas had 13 black bear calls to CO Service between April 1st of 2020 till now. And one tenth of those, or sorry, one third of those involved bears getting into unprotected garbage. And then we had also eight grizzly bear complaints. Unfortunately, that did result in the euthanization of one grizzly bear that had become far too comfortable around humans. Very food-conditioned and was exhibiting aggressive behavior, and that particular instance stemmed from unprotected chickens. But there was some garbage conditioning as well out there, and, yeah. This shows a bear trying to access a bear-resistant container. WildSAPC has a nice list of bear-resistant garbage containers. So the opportunity for residents at persistent problem areas to deposit garbage in a lot centralized community here. Means of storing garbage securely residences and enforcement at residences that refuse to store garbage properly reduce attractants. This is typically what we've done in British Columbia in the past underneath the Wildlife Act. It is an offense to allow bears or other dangerous wildlife to access unprotected garbage. So these containers have been adopted by a lot of municipalities across British Columbia. And also attractive management bylaws have also been adapted. In fact, I think Armstrong just passed one last week. And you folks have a really good law already with your bylaw that has a section in there that prohibits people from accumulating garbage that attracts, I believe, it's raccoons, skunks, and rats, and other animals on there. But bears are not listed on there. So what I'm hoping to try and point you guys in the right direction of is that's something that could potentially be amended to assist with us. And in a lot of circumstances, too, the places I've worked in the past, the attracting tickets issued by bylaw officers, the fines actually double or even higher than what we give. It's per hour. Our is only 230 at the first go. It's not that much. And we unfortunately do have a lot of instances where people will either not pay it, or they will dispute it. And how the court systems work, unfortunately, is more often than not, they do get fine reductions. So it doesn't hurt that much. We have dangerous wildlife protection orders that we can give that are a $575 fine, and that adds up for every day that they do not clean up their garbage. But again, how the court climate is, more often than not, they do get them reduced. So, you know, the municipalities help us out a lot when it's a fine that goes on their property taxes or something similar. And the one that I printed off and handed out to review and force, I didn't have enough for everyone. But next community, east of us, Revelstoke, they have a very good bylaw where it actually talks about how there are specific times where their garbage containers have to be left out, and they there are specific times where their garbage containers have to be left out and they can't be put out before or after that time. And then the other thing that I've actually, they're, they're one of the better ones. I remember a port equivalent or equivalent on the coast, they have a good one like this too. But it limits how people are able to have bird feeders out. They have to have their barbecues and grills cleaned. Their freezers have to be locked. Nuts and fruits on their properties, on their trees and plants have to be picked. I'm not expecting anything like that from Sycamore's because you guys are considerably smaller. And Rebelstoke also does have a lot of money they get from their own bears, park coordinators, and also Parks Canada, I believe. Uh, don't quote me on that, but I believe they get some money from them as well. But, uh, certainly, you know, in regards to leaving garbage out or adding that, amending the Good Neighbor bylaw that includes bears. You know, that's certainly something I hope I can demonstrate to you folks. Many places have done it in the past and there's not that many bylaws jurisdictions that don't have it. There's a lot of, a lot of times people do not want to call us because they're afraid that the animal is going to be euthanized. That's never the first case scenario, or I should say worst case scenario. It is always the worst case scenario. The first step is always education with the community and trying to develop a pattern of what this particular bear has done. Um, a lot of situations that we have in this area in the North Okanagan, there's so many pairs, it's difficult to nail down which one is causing which issues because a lot of them look exactly the same or very similar to each other. So that's why the education and the prevention before it becomes an issue is so important. So our call center here is managed 24/7. It's an emergency line. Um, it's for reporting wildlife conflicts as well as enforcement issues. Um, and if those get kind of dispatched depending on severity, it's either an email or a phone call to another zone. And again, this, we have legislation in place for preventing the feeding of dangerous wildlife, the traction of dangerous wildlife. Dangerous wildlife protection order of people refuse to comply with, uh, leaving their garbage outside, you can issue those. And then a massive help for us is WildSafe BC. They have, uh, coordinators in different jurisdictions that go out and they assist with things like the construction and maintenance of fencing, the, um, cleaning of fruit off of trees, um, even just going door to door and handing out things like these that talk about ways to protect, you know, yourself from livestock. Again, stuff that's already been in the presentation, but make sure you garbage secure, but garbage out on collection day only, manage your fruit trees. So they're a great assistance to us. Um, unfortunately though, they're funding a lot of duets. And, uh, we do have one, I believe, working out of Vernon, but I don't think they've started yet. And again, I don't know how far they cover. It's generally the amount of positions that are available. It goes to the regional commissioners to see if they have interest in funding one. Um, and again, I'm not sure what the situation would be here because Rebelstoke is bear smarts. They have their own. So if you folks be interested in that, you would have to talk with someone else from Salmon Arm. It's probably only gonna be you two that would be interested in funding it. Um, it's, it's kind of fortunate for us that Rebelstoke has their own, but another base is not because, you know, they would be able to support more money towards a coordinator. And then the website there has information to provide to people on a regular basis. These pamphlets that I handed out to, Sarah handed out to a bunch of you are located on there. And it's information resource. These are, I believe they are provided to districts also for free, but I have to check that on WildSafe BC's website. And here's just a instance of a location in British Columbia that had a dump that was not electric fenced. That's it now. The electric fencing does work. Um, I'm not gonna go into a deep dive with this. I believe Gillian Anderson was here recently and she talked about some bear issues. Um, she's another resource that we refer people to all the time. Um, she has her own bear electric fencing demonstration gig that she does where she'll go to properties and assist them with setting up electric fencing. And it works really well. It also works really well on situations such as chicken coops in the more, or more rural areas such as, uh, towards Malacua and Canvey area. Um, they will also, as long as they're maintained correctly, they will also defend against grizzly bears. Uh, but they have to be maintained correctly and that's where a lot of people don't do the right thing. They just put one strand up and that's not gonna do anything to really deter a food condition bear, so. That's all I have. Um, if any of you folks have any questions, I kinda, I wanted to talk about the, the bylaw stuff most. But anybody else has anything they'd like me to touch on or any questions?
Thank you very much, Eric. Counsel, does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Counsel Bushel.
You're the chair. Thank you, Eric. Uh, that was a great presentation. Just, uh, yeah, bears, regarding the bears in the dump around here, we have a, uh, fence dump and.
Yes, I, I, I didn't mean to show that. You guys, I just wanted to show it as an infographic. Yeah, I think, I think the vast majority in British Columbia are electric. There was a big push about fifteen years ago to get all of them electrified, um, for that reason. Yeah, we have, but we still have a few holdouts. In fact, there was a few where I came from, uh, that refused to get them electrified. Like, uh, yeah, once, once they have that food source that's unprotected, their behavior just escalates considerably. Though they have very strong memories and they have, also have very powerful noses. Unfortunately, they can smell food from a couple of miles away. And, uh, once they've fed on garbage, they will target that because it's full of calories, bad calories, but still it's full of calories and oftentimes sugars and stuff like that, but they want more than their natural food sources. So it's a big challenge. Like we saw the numbers for, and now that it's only gone up to that infographic was old and only went to 2013. Um, I can tell you this year, um, from what I saw the previous slide there, we've had about ten thousand calls so far already for food-conditioned black bears and about, I think it was sixty for grizzly bears. The grizzly bear is still lower. Um, but yeah, it's, uh, the majority of those again are, they're conditioned to garbage. They're getting into people's natural garbage. So it's, it's very, very important. We get as many people on board with the leaving the garbage locked up in a secure location until collection date and not setting it the night before, not letting people to leave the cans empty out afterwards. Because even that's an attractive, even after the garbage has been removed. This dent, we recommend people, you know, they, they rinse their bins out with just bleach, no scented anything, just bleach. Pretty much every two months. And especially if it's really hot, you're probably gonna have to heat dome again this year every couple of weeks. Because it's, uh, it is a massive, massive beacon.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, you know, our, our, because I live next door to it and, uh, it's really well run. Uh, they cover the garbage and, uh, it never has any bear problems. Or even for that matter, raccoons or.
And you, you folks, again, like I, I just wanted to present this stuff and leave it open for you guys' discussion there. But the kind of the B in your year for the attractive bylaw there. But, uh, the, the number of bear calls that you guys have, that's, that's actually decent. That's, that's low. I thought it was gonna be a lot higher. That being said, there's probably a culture of people not calling because they know that we haven't been around. So now that we know that, you know, people know that we're here, those calls are probably going to rise. Um, we've only had a couple this year and nothing that we could really action yet. But we just wanna make sure that we kind of put this information before you folks and try and get a bit before the curve. And then also, you know, get the education and stuff like that out there. Um, and that being said, we've spoken to you guys first. We haven't reached out to Salmon Arm yet to do this. But I know it'll be, it'll be difficult there as well. Well, it's having difficulty here, sorry. But it'll, it'll probably be difficult there because we've had some resistance from them in the past to develop any sort of attractive bylaw. So, yeah, but, uh, that being said, we're here now, um, we're available. Um, we're much closer than the guys were in the past. So we hope to work with you folks again and make, we can make it safe for the people that live here and also for the wildlife that live here. You guys are very lucky to live in such a beautiful location. And you've got, uh, a lot of really cool wildlife around you and, you know, sometimes it gets a bit too close for comfort. But, you know, it's a little, a little cooperation. Hopefully we can reduce that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Only, uh, destroyed, my knowledge, in the seven years I've been here, uh, one, one black bear.
Yeah.
Soul square, yeah.
And we do, we do get, uh, it's just busy area. Highway one is incredibly busy in the summertime. You'll probably see us doing that as well. We'll get calls out for injured black bears and injured deer also, a lot of injured deer calls. Um, that's fortunately, it's, it's never, never a happy day when that has to be done. That's why we do these kind of talks is to try and reduce that as much as possible where healthy animals, but that have become habituated with food conditions um, are destroyed because relocation in smaller jurisdictions, it can work if it's done correctly. It cannot work in British Columbia. There's, there's too many black bears. There's too many human settlements. Uh, more often than not, when bears are moved, it's a, it's basically the last resort out of that or things. And British Columbia, we don't do it because they come back. It's, it's been proven time and time again in our, in our research that we've done. They either will go to the next area of human settlements or they will be killed by another black bear or grizzly bear. So the only instance that we really do it out here is if it is a female grizzly bear from a population that is endangered, then the biologist will support us moving them. But they have to have, you know, full, full health, no condition, no previous human food conditioning, no habituation, no conflict history. And generally by the time people are calling us, that has closed. That's already happened. So that's why it's so important. We, we cannot relocate this promise.
Thanks, Eric. Good gourd. Counsel Bushel.
Okay, just one more. Uh, um, now that you're involved in the community, how, how, how involved are you with the snowmobile club or the caribou, uh, that we have?
They're gonna be very much so. Like I, I will be taking that over. Um, I, we haven't started yet. I've already talked to some of the caribou guys from the past. And I've actually all already spoken to, uh, Rob Soroya, who's one of the lead, uh, caribou researchers in Rebelstoke there. So I will be the lead. I don't know if it'll be this year, definitely next year. Um, but yes, we are still committed to doing that. We are still committed to the, uh, non-caribou recovery and ensuring that these areas are still closed and ensuring that that habitat for them is protected. Um, so yes, I'll, I will probably be able to answer some of your questions on that. Definitely next year when I fully take the program over. But they've started grooming me already to, you know, how to arrange the budgets and stuff like that, the flights, everything, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Eric. Counsel Rich.
Hi, I'm Shwansh. Glad you asked for being late. Um, what are the chances in our area of having some of our grizzlies tagged and followed? So we have a, a better understanding of what's happening with our.
Reach out to our bios. I can't remember the last time they actually did that out here. Um, I know they have bulls more recently, I think, than grizzlies, but, um, I'll, I'll bring it up to my supervisor. Uh, but yeah, that's, that's not really up to us. That's up to official wildlife branch if they're interested in doing that. Um, good news is they have a separate budget, so they'd be the ones paying if, if, uh, they were interested in doing that. But, um, yeah, absolutely. Um, uh, I can provide my cards here. I know my contact info, I think, was in the plan that Sarah had there. But if you wanna shoot me an email regarding that, yeah, absolutely. I'll reach out and see what they say.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Um, here in Sycamore's, we've decided this year that we're doing our own little media camp, not little. Our social, we, so on our social media right now, we have information about bears. Daryl, uh, from Public Works is doing up some signs, so we have signage going up as well. So, uh, we tried to get ahead of the curve this year.
That's awesome, yeah.
So, because at, at some point it does become a problem and it's, it's like it just drops on you. Everybody goes, oh, where did all the bears come from? You know, we're, we live here. We know they're coming. So it's education, of course.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm very happy to hear that. So, yeah, if you need the assistance with those, again, feel free to contact me. Um, and that your information is gonna be the same as WildSafe's for sure. But, uh, no, that's, that's excellent. We love to see that. We love to see the community's kind of taking the lead on doing stuff like that. And we always are available to assist when needed. Um, but yeah, you know, we, we wanna, we wanna be there to do as much of the education as possible. And that's the biggest thing we wanna be invested in. But yes, the attractive management, you'll always get people that do not wanna control their garbage or don't care. And that's why we're enforcement officers.
Absolutely. And we do run into that with people just, and people just dropping their garbage outside someone's bin. Which turns into a big problem. So that's kind of, uh, the direction that we're heading. Please don't leave your garbage, because, you know.
I was recently at White Lake and, uh, I was very sad to see that, um, you know, it's not even a busy season and there was five or six garbage bags right behind a fruit garbage bin that was full. So I, I forwarded that one off to BC Parks and pulled them to smarten up because it's gonna get a lot more busier.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would respond to a bear in a small park like that.
And WildSafe is running a program with Sycamore's, you have three, two areas.
Okay.
To my knowledge, I don't know if they've actually hired the coordinator yet. Some change with there. Uh, Vanessa that presented to us isn't there right now with WildSafe. It's a different lady. And so they're coordinating that.
That's good.
Once they have a coordinator, they're, they're gonna reach out to us with any swag or any kind of things that we can.
And.
That's great. I'm, I'm very happy to hear that. Because like I said, um, previously in past years, uh, Salmon Arm has not been open to, um, some of the stuff that we told them. So that makes me happy that they are going to WildSafe route.
Yeah. And then the bottom of our tax insert, that's gonna be going out end of May, um, has links to our website and
Oh, perfect.
And your, your phone number and stuff.
The contact number, yeah, the one eight seven seven up. But that's great. Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Bianca. Um, just one more thing, Eric, from me. We've talked a lot about bears, but the wrap line covers a lot of other things that goes to you. So maybe you can touch on a few of those things as well.
So we enforce, uh, it's more now. I think it's actually close to forty, but, uh, thirty-eight pieces of legislation, both federal and provincial. And that covers everything from the Wildfire Act, Wildlife Act, Fisheries Act, Environmental Management Act and the regulations. So prohibited burning, that's another big thing we get all the time. Off-road Vehicle Act, so people ATVing in places they're not supposed to or snowmobiling in places they're not supposed to. And, uh, as well as, you know, Water Sustainability Act, um, there's a bunch of other ones that, that we look after. But, uh, yes, it's, it's available as a resource and we encourage people to call us as well. Um, a lot of people don't, uh, we've done a really good job of promoting it in the past years and I think this year as well. But for whatever reason, we get a lot of people that still don't know that where the ATC should call if, you know, they, they observe a poaching violation or if, uh, they turn the fire ban, a lot of calls get routed to the RCMP. Um, if people are having fires during, you know, closures, we're the primary enforcement agency for that. You know, we're all the enforcement roads are. We know all the places that people are doing this stuff. Um, and then obviously with Shuswap Lake being here, the boat safety issues, the fishing close time, prohibited gear, all that stuff. That's also us. So the fisheries also enforces that as well. We're fortunate that we're in the same office as the MO. Um, so we have assisted them a couple of times with vessel patrols on Shuswap Lake. And those have both been great success at the few times we've gone out together. And we're looking forward to the rest of these. I'm good. It's getting busy now. I know there's another fishing derby coming up this weekend. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to assist with that one. But, uh, yeah, we, we run the gamut of a lot of different pieces of legislation. Um, and we, we do as much to get promotion as we possibly can, new school talks. We were at the Kelowna Interior Sportsman Show. I think it was a month ago now. Um, and, uh, yeah, the calls, calls are on the rise across the board for everything. Uh, it's not so much there's an increase in poaching activity or, you know, bad stuff going on. That's always been going on. It's, we're getting a lot more people moving into these areas that may not understand, you know, exactly how to live with wildlife. Or they, you know, they are just learning the areas, hunting season, something like that. Because we do get a lot of calls that are nothing, unfortunately. But, uh, we still have to investigate them to ensure that, uh, there are things going on. Our call center does a really good job, but they're also human and they have a very, I would not wanna do their job. And they, they have dispatched stuff to it in the past that is not a CO issue. But, um, definitely prohibited burning, the off-road vehicles in closed areas, uh, the fishing violations, the boat safety violations, um, poaching, all that stuff's us.
Okay. Um, just one more question, uh, which is, uh, when I, the last time I called the wrap line, is it a twenty-four hour line? Because I couldn't get through last.
I'm not sure. Like, so when, when you call the wrap line, you'll have the automated message. And then there's the option, I believe the first option is to report a wildlife concern. And the second option is to report a violation in progress. Either of those should put you through your dispatcher, but you're not the only person that's told me that's happened to. I don't know what's going on with that. I can escalate that to the sergeant that's in charge of that. Um, I know quite well, actually, he's the, based out of seashells. But, uh, yeah, I've heard that probably a dozen times just since I've come here.
Yeah, so.
We're unable to get, I, I don't know what's going on with that. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into it. Yeah, you should always reach somebody.
Yeah, well, this information that we're sharing with you, so yes, maybe you could escalate that top of the line as well. Perfect. Does anyone else have any questions? We're all good. Eric, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me. And yes, my contacts, uh, my contact information, I believe, is in the, the plan that Sarah has there. So if any of you wanna reach me or have an email or another question, we look forward to working with you folks again in the future.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, we have, uh, Community Bioheat Update from David Dubois from Fink Machine, Inc. He is virtual, I think. So, um, David, are you online right now?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. Can I get you to turn up your, your volume a tiny bit or speak up a little bit more?
Um, I can speak a little bit louder if you like.
That's great. Um, yes, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I appreciate giving, you giving me the opportunity to present today. My apologies for not appearing in person, but for those that don't know, I'm a counselor with the village of Cache Creek. Cache Creek is currently under a state of emergency and we are experiencing some fairly significant flooding. So I just didn't feel appropriate to be leaving the community at this time. So I'm here to present to you remotely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Excuse me. So just a, a couple of things. Uh, I believe there was a report that I submitted. I'm not sure if that was included in your guys' package or not, or if that's available.
Yes, it goes.
Yes, we have it.
Okay. Excellent. So just kind of going through the report. Um, the DE building, which is the district energy building that is being constructed. Uh, the concrete work is complete and as of this morning, we are actually in lockup stage with that. So we've made some really good progress on that over the past couple of weeks. So because we are in. So because we are in lockup stage, we're actually starting to do the installation of the boiler and a number of the different pieces of equipment that need to go in there. So that's all progressing at at pace. The distribution lines, the current status on those is that there is the main line. The first line that was being run to the TA structure's main building. That line was directionally drilled before Christmas and then the final connection into the district energy center was completed earlier this week. So that is done. There is the second line that's gonna run east-west along the road. They're starting to do the installation of that line there. They're currently just doing some exposing around some of the district infrastructure on the corner of the lot. That we're anticipating that that's gonna be complete in the next two days. That's being overseen by district staff as well. Once that's done, we'll be installing the rest of that main line. As part of that line, we'll be installing a couple of Ts for connection to future buildings that it's our understanding, there's been some interest in those potential product, potential buildings on those sites. So there's some work going on on those. But if and when those are developed, those are in a position to connect to the district energy system. We will also be installing the line to the second TA structure, which we're calling the large tent that's on site. We're anticipating that to happen in the next couple of weeks as well. The infrastructure inside of the buildings is all ready to go. And then lastly, there's going to be a short connection that will traverse across the road. That's gonna be happening in the next couple of weeks as well to connect the property across the way. And I think that's really kind of just a real quick summary of where we are at. We're anticipating that the substantial completion is gonna be done by the end of June. Obviously, there's not gonna be a lot of heat demand in June, so we're anticipating that startup and commissioning will be happening once there's a demand for heat sometime September, October, and we'll be coordinating at that time. In addition, during the summer, we are anticipating that there'll be some cleanup and in terms of final landscaping of the energy center, et cetera. So there's just a couple of pictures there. Those pictures are actually were as of last week, but they're already a little bit of out of date.
Awesome. Thank you, David. Council, do you have any questions for David? Council McCabe.
Thank you. Yeah, just wondering, do you have a secure pot, a security supply for your biomass?
So as part of the contract, actually, Think Machine is doing two things. We're actually doing two years worth of operations and maintenance as part of the capital budget project. So we're gonna be doing that for the first two years, as well as we have an agreement with the District of Sicamous to provide fuel at a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. That's what we will provide, be providing, but that's a non-exclusive agreement. The district is free to source fuel from other sources that they'll be able to utilize for that, based in past discussions with with some of the administration, as well as in particular with the the fire department. We anticipate that there's gonna be substantial amount of wood that's gonna be potentially available from some of the wildfire mitigation work that's gonna be happening over the next little while.
Thank you. Anyone? Council Bushel.
Thank you for the presentation, David. Just a question on operation. Are you gonna operate it from Interby? Are you gonna be looking to hire somebody or do you have somebody to run it?
At this point, the operational requirements are, we're anticipating to be quite low. So we are going to be doing remote monitoring of the system via the internet to look at what's gonna be going and doing the daily operation side of it. We are only forty-five minutes away in Interby, so we will be anticipating at least initially that if needed, when and if probably in the order of once a week, that somebody from staff will be going out to site to do anything. Beyond that, we haven't anticipated hiring anybody, but that that is subject to change. But we're we're not seeing that, at least in the short term.
Okay, thank you. I had somebody inquire and I sent him your way. So thank you very much.
No, appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? So David, I have a quick question. Do we have a an estimate of what it's going to cost to get the bio heat from the station where it is right now, say, across the road and to the rest of the industrial park? Because that sort of is a goal, I think, at the end of the day. So is there an estimate cost of to hook up to the biomass plant?
So just so that I'm clear, are you talking in that existing subdivision that is currently being?
Correct, in the industrial park.
Yeah. That has been outside of the scope of this project for the capital side of it. That being said, I think there has been some discussion based on the current rates, what that would look like. And the initial phase of the project, we'd have to, you probably want to confirm this with staff, is the pricing was a little bit different. But any future connections would have to be discussed at that time.
Okay, thank you, David. And just for clarification, I hear occasionally the the anchor tenant, which is Twin Acres Plant, because it is a plant and does burn so much wood and propane, and the smoke is incredible in that little space in the winter time in those trees and valleys and for the residents there. This is actually gonna cost Twin Acres a little bit more to their plant, from my understanding. The smoke coming from the plant will be down to zero. So I'm glad that they signed up and put their hand up to be a tenant client. Move forward with this, even though it was gonna cost them a little bit more. So thanks to them as well. Okay, anyone else have any questions? No? Thank you, David. We're good to go.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving forward. Bylaw enforcement presentation, John, District of Sicamous bylaw. Take it away, John.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I am here just to sort of give a brief overview of the bylaw enforcement department, how we receive complaints and our process for handling them. Hold on. So we place our receipt in phone or in person, on the phone, via email, or through our online complaint form. I'd like to mention that the online complaint form is the best way to send in information on a bylaw complaint. Because it has all the questions that I need answered and I'm able to assess and investigate immediately off of the online complaint form, so. As with the conservation service, our primary focus is always education. With the education, we attempt to get voluntary compliance before moving any any forced actions or requirements with the property owners. Of course, education doesn't produce voluntary compliance.
Pretty realistic looking.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, education doesn't produce voluntary compliance. We go more of an enforcement action. There's sort of a procedure follows along this history here. We receive the complaint, I respond to the complainant and let them know that I'm looking into this, the their their issue, investigate the address for any history. I like to do a site inspection. And if the owner's there, I do a knock and talk and do an initial education speak, you know, start talking with them. Issue the issue a letter detailing the contravention and suggested timeline for compliance. After that, depending on how conversations go, issue a second letter. Potentially after that, further letters or other enforcement. And that other enforcement can include ticketing, civil action, or in in the most extreme cases, coming to council for a medial action. So the traffic, parks, noise, and some animal control complaints are investigated on a priority basis during my patrols. Because on those ones, the majority of those complaints require ticketing for enforcement. And of course, under our current system, MTIs or our tickets have to be served individually. Which is the way we've traditionally dealt with, especially with the issues. I'd like to sort of address Council on this, especially if you're receiving a complaint from the public or you would like information on any sort of specific issue, please feel free to reach out to me or direct the public to the website for that online complaint form. You can also provide my cell phone number if it's something that is an urgent matter that they want to talk to me about. Thank you for listening to my quick presentation. If there's any questions.
Yep, we do have some. Council Rich, go ahead.
Thank you, John One, for doing this job. I know it's not an easy one. We appreciate you tons. My first question would be, what's the timeline for a complaint? So I email you or phone you and I say, whatever, my neighbor's dog's running up and down the road making me mad. So how how fast is the reaction time on that?
Depending on my shifts, unfortunately, because I only work five days a week. I normally respond to the complaints within seventy-two hours, at least let them acknowledge that I've received the complaint. Depending on the severity of the complaint, I'm mainly dealing with the owners or individuals involved by the end of the week. So it's sort of five days, within five days of receiving it.
So it's a, okay.
I'm fairly, I mean, the case though is still, I mean, it's building, but it's still small enough that I'm able to keep to that deadline.
Yeah, go ahead. So so what five days do you work?
Right now, right now, I am transitioning to the summer schedule and I will be working Friday through to Tuesday, having Wednesdays and Thursdays off.
And what are your hours?
For Fridays and Saturdays, it's an afternoon shift into the late evening. So I start, I believe, at three o'clock and I'll be on until eleven thirty. And Sunday through Tuesday, I remember correctly, it's ten till six thirty.
And if we can't get ahold of you, then where, who is our next step as a citizen, not me personally?
It would depend on the complaint. If it's an aggressive dog, I would recommend calling either conservation or the RCMP. I'm not sure which. Complaints in regards to burning or fires or fireworks, you can contact the fire department or the RCMP or conservation if it's up in the bush somewhere. So the remainder of the complaints, while they may seem to be a priority to people, they can be dealt with on a regular basis.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council Bushel.
Okay, thanks to the chair. Thanks, John. Just a quick one. Now that we've implemented the short-term rental bylaw, have you had any, you know, a lot of traffic or is there a lot of calls coming in about it or anything like that?
I have received I think I'm up to about twenty-five complaints on short-term rentals already.
Oh, my gosh.
They primarily for people that haven't got a license yet. We're, we are in our educational stage, so I am not doing any enforcement on the actual rentals themselves, just informing the owners of the property that they need to have a license and going through a letter writing campaign until at least I see an application come in for that property. When we do move to the enforcement side of things, that will give me that backup in case I have to go out and immediately start ticketing or, you know, going for civil action to shut down a rental.
Great, great. No, that's good. It shows that it's actually working. People are are starting to call. And of course, we've got lots of people signing up too. So that's good too. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Gord. Council Rich.
Through the chair. What is your usual time to deal with complaints? So if if I complain, like, does it take you two hours or five hours or nine hours? You're you're working about forty hours a week for summer hours and someone calls in for a short-term rental issue from start to finish, how much do you put in for each in in general? And I know that's maybe it's need to get back to us for.
In the length of time I actually spend working on an individual complaint?
Yes.
Okay. In regards to short-term rental, I'm gonna say it's about half an hour right now. And that primarily consists of checking the property files to find out if they've got an application in already. If they don't have the application in, it's a pretty basic form letter that I'm sending out with the details on an application package. Once we move to the enforcement, I expect that that would be a little bit more time for dealing with them. First checking for the license and then attending the site to deal with whatever issues have prompted the call. The noise or fires, fireworks, parking issues, et cetera.
Hey, thank you.
Council Bailey.
I'm just, I don't know, what's the order of priority? You obviously can't do it all. And so in the whole scheme of things, there's gonna be complaints that are more useless than others, right? You know, where where, you know, what are you kind of focusing on? In summer, is it like parking bylaws, practice, something more serious than?
During the summer, my primary focus is on parks, animal control, and then parking issues. And then for other complaints or such as property complaints on sightseeing, please, I deal with them on a regular basis as I'm in the office during that time. I do spend most of the summer out on patrol rather than working in the office.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thanks. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. So maybe going back to the short-term rentals. So one thing John is doing is he's encouraging everybody to apply for a business license. So we are getting the business license applications from those properties that are complained about. However, probably jury that claims according to one property, so we can't issue business licenses right now. So we have probably a dozen applications for business licenses out of those twenty-five, but we're kind of waiting for some of the things till my. Then just add it to John's hours. So in the past, we have had the bylaw ambassador. So last year, we had Sierra and she worked kind of the times John wasn't working. So that'd be the the Wednesdays and Thursdays where they, Sierra worked kind of the regular business hours and did a lot of patrols and, you know, looked at the parks and issued a lot of parking tickets. So we'll probably look to continue that this year. Only slightly reduced. We didn't get the funding we received last year, but we are looking at supporting it. With the bylaw ambassador. So maybe this is a good time for the committee to give some feedback to myself and John on what you'd like to see this year, as far as we can continue like we did last week. John, do you want to talk about what Sierra did last year and then then council committees can give some feedback to John on that as well?
So for last year, primary focus was on parks and traffic. We, in regards to the sort of loose animals, she would request people put animals on leashes, but we weren't ticketing for it at the time. So there was no real enforcement that we were doing at that for that. Beyond that, she, basically, she just did patrols and made her presence felt to control it. Especially the drinking that was happening in the upper class year, kids jumping off the bridge excited up.
Thank you. Not Council Bailey.
Yeah, I just kind of a follow-up for what you said with the short-term rentals. Is the, so all the complaints are mostly coming from one source? Is that correct? Or one, let's say, building? Yeah, most, most of our legacy, where it was, people complaining about the legacy and and until their strata gets things precise, we can't issue the business licenses, so.
Well, and that's what I was gonna emphasize is that I think, you know, until the strata actually goes ahead and makes their rules, are we going to be, you know, saying, if we are? if we are continuing to get these levels of complaints that are sucking up our resources when it should be the other way around? They should be figuring out that we just park some of those complaints and not burden John with this ongoing kind of feud that's going on at the legacy?
Go ahead, Scott.
Maybe, John, you want to talk about your strategy a little bit?
Um, in regards to the legacy complaints, um, the only time I open an actual complaint file for them is if they haven't, uh, applied for a business license. Uh, other than that, I just take the complaint. I'm keeping files on each individual unit. For once the legacy has finished their, uh, discussions, uh, if we have to go to an enforcement stage, uh, then I go out the records of when the units were rented and, and the complaints that came from it.
Great, thanks. Yeah, and, and I, I, I make this point just so that we're not here to solve building issue, right? And we've had them at council, we've talked about this issue, but I think that's really important for the integrity of the, the, uh, short-term rental bylaw going forward, is that it's used properly. Not as a weapon against your neighbor that you may not agree with, depending on what's happening at the legacy. So, uh, or, or in your condo. Um, just wanna make that point. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bailey.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, uh, one question and it's to John and Murray? Um, now that we have our bylaw, uh, with no illicit drugs in our, our parks and we have a specific list. So folks that are in those parks, according to bylaw police, there's no fines attached from this, just removal, correct? So how, how do you want the general public to deal with that?
I think we would probably need the police to be the main point of contact for that, for people using in the park. And with the bylaw not having a fine, we're obviously not issuing a fine or just, uh, telling people that they're breach of the district's bylaw and that they can't be in the park and remove them at that time for, for the violation.
Right.
Uh, I'd just say for that, when I'm controlling the parks, um, if I do see people using illicit substances, I have been telling them not to do it in the park and moving them on. I haven't been contacting the RCMP regarding it, uh, just because it's basically just been the, the occasional user and they've been really prompted to comply with leaving the parks.
Okay.
If you think that there's gonna be pushback or something.
I will be calling you. Don't worry.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah, it seems like a. Counselor Bushel?
Thank you, through the chair. Um, yeah, John, and maybe Scott, I just wonder about, it is nice to have, uh, when you're off, because you gotta take days off, but it would, I mean, it would be nice to have, uh, ambassador again, and I know we didn't get the funding. Did we look at, uh, the economic opportunity fund to just pop up a little bit to, to get that, you know, that staff member out there on those, on your days off? Because it is, it is good to have somebody in the community and it also has extra eyes for the RCMP as well. And, and I just, just a thought anyways, I don't know if that's, if it's doable or not. Like, we, we did use that with, uh, our, I guess that was Johnny. I guess we used our econo- ec- ec- economic opportunity fund for Johnny when we hired him. Something to think about.
Scott, go ahead.
I think we do have, we do have a budget for it, just not, not as much as last year because we didn't get the funding from the federal government, but we, we will provide the service, I think we're planning to, just, just probably not as big bust as we did last year.
Could there be a top-up? Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, to that point, the, the funding that we got was half of minimum wage and we pay more than that in our environment. So it really doesn't have a massive material effect on the hours of that person. I think having somebody here is more important, so.
Absolutely, I agree. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything? Go ahead, Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. John, just to put you on the spot, um, if we could change or know something that maybe you need that we, because I know you and see you, but never asked that question, um, that, that is there anything we're missing that we should know about? Because you're the one on the street.
Uh, right now I can't think of anything. Apply my, my quarterly reports to Scott who brings them to council and that. There's, there's no cases that are going any further than my level at this moment. Once they do, I'll be bringing them to you in, in camera meetings.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Um, okay, the bylaw, offense notice and bylaw. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Judication system, John, you can, uh, go ahead with that. Right after this commercial break.
Oh, I'd like myself a good picture. Geez, boy, that's not confusing at all.
What is, what is that?
Something's flowing from the turret.
Go ahead, John.
It's Mayor Council, I prevent presenting an informational report in regards to adding, uh, another level of enforcement to the bylaw department. Um, and this is moving away from MTIs or the municipal ticket information system to a bylaw offense notice system. I'm sure if you've had a chance to read through the complete report, uh, but the, the main point of the switch from the one system to the other uh, is that, uh, MTIs or the, what we're using right now are required to be personally served. Um, so with a lot of our, uh, issues, especially regarding short-term rentals, um, or unsightly properties where these, the owners are out of town, um, it makes my job for enforcement really difficult because I don't have that extra um, with a little financial penalty to say, hey, we're serious, we want you to take care of us. The, uh, bylaw offense notices, of course, can be mailed, uh, through standard mail after a valid ticket. A couple of other points with them is a bylaw, uh, offense notice. The, uh, fine amount is limited, uh, to five hundred dollars. So they'll be, they're, they're not a very large ticket, um, for these offenses. Uh, or even if we go to maximum, it's still, uh, compared to what, especially in the case of short-term rentals, uh, what they're making off their properties, uh, for these fines, so.
Questions, anyone? Counselor McCabe?
How much would the new system cost?
Implement?
Or to implement, yeah, to, for the transition over and, and to get it up and running and, and annual operating, but?
Um, for an annual operating cost, um, once we've applied through the Solicitor General, um, we can then apply to uh, join another, other municipalities in the adjudication system. And that will depend on how many municipalities are in the same system. Or in the same group for that system. The, my recommendation would be for us to join the, uh, Southern Interior Group and our costs would probably be on the lower side of about three hundred dollars, uh, up to about a maximum of a thousand dollars, uh, to be part of the adjudication system.
Annual?
Uh, annual, yeah. And that's dependent on how many, um, disputes we get on the tickets, um, how many cases are, are going to the adjudication. And in regards to that, if somebody disputes a, a ticket and it goes to the adjudicator and they deem them guilty, we are allowed to charge a twenty-five dollar fee, uh, to recoup some of those costs for adjudicator. And then in, in regards to the, uh, actual tickets themselves, um, if I remember correctly, my purchase of MTI tickets last year was roughly a thousand dollars. Um, so it would be about the same amount to get the MTI tickets.
Counselor Bushel?
Through the chair. I do want, uh, the screening personnel that we would have to have, uh, you guys thought about who we can have on the staff? Like, would it be somebody on staff or would you have to have somebody new come in?
Well, um, there's actually two positions involved with the adjudication. So the first is a screening officer and that would be somebody that's already on staff, um, either a manager or, um, uh, any senior staff really can do that screening. And what the screening officer is looking for is, um, did the violation occur? Is the ticket filled out properly? And, um, if it is, then it's, uh, it would be a valid ticket. Um, but they can also at that time, depending on uh, what the ticket is for, they could enter into a compliance agreement, uh, with the, the the individual that's been served, uh, to require, uh, certain thing be done and then void the ticket after that is done. Which is really good for the property offenses on sight lease, uh, the short-term rentals as well, uh, to make sure that those things get taken care of. Uh, then, then it would go to adjudication if they, uh, wanted to continue. And, uh, as I say, with the Southern Interior Group, um, court would be held in Burke.
No, thanks, John. I know, I, I support the program myself. I think it's good, you know, Daryl's probably looking for some more work.
Yeah.
Be the screening person. No, I'm just kidding, no. Thank you.
Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, so you're proposing that we add on the, the bond system on top of the MTI? Because, or replace MTI with bond?
Uh, what I'm proposing is actually adding it to the, uh, MTI system. Uh, let's say with the bond system, the fines are lower. Um, where we're getting into issues where compliance agreements or orders haven't assisted, we would then switch up to the MTI tickets, which are for a larger value. Um, and then following that becoming a council or, uh, either legal action or remedial action orders.
So my only concern that kind of crossed my mind on adding on the bond system is, you know, are we then going to take that and then use it to issue more tickets? Um, is that something that happens with the system? Yes, maybe explain a little bit more, how, how you think it's going to work?
There, there will be no increase in the amount of tickets issued, um, or very minor increase. If I, I say, once, once we move into some of the enforcement actions in regards to absent property owners, because we haven't been, traditionally haven't been able to issue, uh, tickets for those and have been relying on, uh, other enforcement measures. So there, there may be a small increase, uh, in the amount of, of tickets issued. But as I said with, uh, my previous presentation, education is and always will be my first priority. I would rather have people stop doing things voluntarily than forcing them to do things.
So you, like, the bond system really allows you, you know, to have, you know, if you have absentee property owners, you have a problem on that property, say, hey, you're not responding to me, we're gonna issue my two hundred dollar fine and, uh, that's gonna go to you and then maybe I'll get your attention and then you'll comply. So that's kind of, it's just another lever to, let's say, get someone's attention.
Absolutely, that's correct. Uh, and with a lot of the tickets that I have issued for property violations, once the owners have received those tickets, um, they, they agree to do what's required and once it's finished, I normally void them. Uh, I haven't collected on very many property tickets at all. Uh, it's, as I say, it's, it's a tool rather than a punishment.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly okay with another tool. I'd hate to see that we lean on that to increase fines, but I, I really appreciate your, your comments on that and your perspective because I think, you know, fines are all really good, but if we do too many of them, then it becomes a, you know, like another issue. So, yeah, thanks for those comments.
Um, I have a quick question, John. The fines that you wrote, let, let's just take last year. And what's the percentage of those that we didn't collect?
Out of the tickets that I wrote last year, I think we collected seventy-five percent, maybe eighty percent of them.
That's really good.
And out of that, the majority of them are paid early, um, and there is of course reduced fine amounts for paying early. So it's, you know, it's, it's it's definitely beneficial.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah, maybe if there is, this is like going into a, a second step of complication, I feel like, my personal opinion. I think if what we have right now is working that well and maybe we could tweak it to make it work better, I, and it's up to you guys. I mean, I'm, well, it's up to us, but wh- what works for you guys? But I think, but from what I'm hearing, we're doing pretty good. So, uh, go ahead, Scott.
Two advantages for the bond system is, number one, MGI tickets are barely, very vulnerable to challenge. So if John or Tiff issues those MTIs and someone received one on the dash of their car and they decided they weren't gonna pay them, for us to get that money would be very difficult and, and we might not get it if it went to court. And also John is then scheduling a court appearance in seminar for, to discuss one parking ticket. And understand the resources it takes to, to do that. The bond system is, it's not as open to challenge, so he can leave them on the windshield of the vehicle and not have to worry about losing in court. The other part is, instead of him scheduling a court for one parking ticket, they're all considered by that adjudication system, they're all considered. So all the tickets kind of in the Southern Interior are considered on one day by one person and they're just going through these, through the bond process and not the MTI process. So the two advantages are, it's less open to challenge and more likely be successful, um, collecting the money. And then the second part is, it's less time-consuming because it's, all of them are being considered on one day and John only has to go to that place one day, a month, or every two months and they're all dealt with on the same day by the, the same person.
Um, if I could add a note in that spot, um, I, is, as part of the adjudication system, I am actually not actually required to go to the adjudicator to defend the ticket because they're there to look at the ticket and the evidence surrounding the ticket. So my photograph of a vehicle parked illegally, the ticket is correctly filled out, it's a valid ticket. Uh, versus, um, taking an MTI to court, then they look at, uh, the bylaw and, uh, the ticket and the pictures. And if there is even one tiny mistake on an MTI ticket, it's immediately thrown out of court. Unfortunately, it's very easy to make a mistake on a ticket, um, just even by forgetting to dot an i.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point was, I, I don't know if we have enough problem yet. Like, I, it looks like people are minding their Ps and Qs and if someone doesn't pay their ticket, the next time you see their vehicle that plate, you put it, call a tow truck and then people will continue to mind their Ps. I, yeah, I guess, I guess more of, just maybe a bit more information. I'm just kind of on the fence with this one, so. But good information. Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, I'm kind of on the fence too. Um, we're not passing anything on, right? We're gonna, okay.
Information.
You know, my, my thing about, I guess I just haven't, like, I understand the system and I understand why it's, it's a benefit. I have probably some problems with the screener system, like whoever that is, you can say, yeah, I love the ticket. You know, it's kind of a, it's kind of an inside system, works all in our favor, maybe not for the person who's getting the ticket, right? So, you know, I have a little bit of a, a fairness question in my mind about that and how it would actually work and how we're gonna issue them. And does this system eventually take over the MTI system? And now we're, because, you know, we're, it's easier, do we just flow things through more like that? I, I often worry about the level of tickets that are being issued because I think the more tickets taken issue probably, you know, uh, I, I don't know, I, I, I just don't like to lean on that. So I worry about these sort of systems because they kind of, I think evolve and grow over time and they grow into something that we don't originally think they're gonna grow into. So that's my reservation on that, on, on, on this. I think if we had some clarity around what we're gonna use bond for. if we had some clarity around what we're gonna use bond for, right? Here's a class of tickets that we're gonna use this for. So absentee property owners, all these other things. Then I would have a little bit more comfort around it. I'd also like to know what our internal process would be, who's the screener and how we're gonna deal with that. But you know, overall, I I like your approach that voluntary compliance is the way to go because I I think that is where you we create a culture where people just want to do the right thing rather than us giving glamour. Um so I I'd like to see just maybe a list or a like a like a short sort of suggestion. So what would we use the bond system for versus the MTI system? Um and and I think if it's if it's limited, then I think there's there's a role for it, especially when it comes to absentee. And but if we're gonna just do a whole bunch of short term rentals through the bond system because we can't get a hold of you. I don't know, like, I'm not totally comfortable that that would be the way that we're gonna enact or try to uh enforce our short term rental thing. So I think it all kind of depends what we're using for it, is what I'm saying.
Thanks. Thanks, Counsel Bailey. Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, um how many times, say, in the last two years, have you had to go to court over a ticket?
Uh I've been to court over tickets seven times. Uh one, I actually had to go to court three times for a single ticket. Just because of uh various i- issues with uh availability. I also had just recently dismissed some tickets um as the property owner brought their property into compliance. Um which were all which were being challenged at the court. So uh that's what took it, you know, that um it's it, I can still cancel the ticket at any time. And inform the court of such, and then then I don't have to go to the court court for it.
But we're losing you for that day. Like if you have to go to court, we've taken you out of our system.
If I have to go to court, it's a minimum of four hours.
I, you know, I like, I kind of agree with Counsel, I don't kind of, I agree with Counsel Bailey. I'd like to get more information and I'd like us, we're we're a community of twenty-five hundred that grows into ten thousand. Yes, I understand, but for that number of people in the summer, I'd like a culture of compliance. I'd like a culture that, you know, and maybe education as opposed to you know, um they're going to court for, you know. So I I think just more information from for me anyway, so. But we're not making any decisions here today, but maybe we can have a conversation. Any other questions, counsel? Good. Thank you, John.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Stop. Thank you.
Hey.
Okay, Parks and Trails Master Plan Station, Steffi. This is planner. Thanks, Steffi. Floor is all yours.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Um so we started working on this Parks and Trails Master Plan around the same time last year as the Act of Transportation at Brookline. And the public engagement process for both of these projects was done at the same time. This Parks and Trails Master Plan will act as a planning tool to direct and guide the management of parks and trails within Sycamore. And our vision statement was derived from the public engagement process. Um and our vision statement is to protect, maintain and enhance existing parks, trails and facilities. And plan for future parks and trails while facilitating all season use and improved accessibility for all ages and abilities. And this was derived from uh the different public engagement activities like surveys, uh focus groups, pop-up events, uh open houses, etc. So this master plan would contain the following information. Um inspection uh on a summary of the study of existing policies and guidelines that is focused on parks and trails. New park classification system, park supply and inventory of parks and trails, recommendations and priority projects, summary of public engagement events and an updated parks and trails map. So for the public engagement, uh we had a diverse range of activities between June and August twenty twenty-two to gather feedback from the community on their parks and trails usage, what are the challenges, experiences, goals, recommendations, etc. A total of twelve engagement opportunities were provided. Um that included community surveys, online and paper format, online interactive map, high school focus group, open houses and pop-up events. We had a total of hundred and forty-four survey responses. Um and some of the common themes in the survey was that more than half of the respondents use parks and trails regularly. However, they get these information through word of mouth and not through any um documents or websites. Concerns with lack of connected system of trails um to parks, downtown schools and other points of interest within town like um sidewalks or trails stop abruptly, it's not continued. Um need for safe highway crossing, better signage and defined routes. And the need for maintenance and improvement of existing parks and trails. And a detailed report on these responses from different public engagement event is added as an appendix A to the report today, to the agenda. And this um my presentation back to the committee of the whole is form of the last um public engagement factor is bringing the draft report back back to the public for their comments and then we'll look on it and then publish the final uh Parks and Trails Master Plan. The next section explores existing parks of um supply uh for Sycamore by evaluating the existing parkland and if that meets the needs and requirements of the current and future. From the big scale of regional parks to the intimacy of small parks, everything is connected to everything else. So although in terms of scale, the function of these parks could be different, but the community value is still the same. As you can see on the screen, this is the proposed new classification system, um because we didn't have a park classification system uh in our previous parks by law. And this matches with our current needs while also being flexible uh for the changing demographics. It will also guide in park asset management um and to deliver both active and passive park um services. The first one being community recreation parks. Um these are usually destination parks that serve the needs of the local community as well as visitors. It usually offers a diverse range of services from athletics to recreational opportunities for all people and ages. Um it can also host tournaments and other community events. So two parks within this this classifications and Jiffen Listen, Sentinel Park and Dog Park. The next one uh is waterfront parks and walkways. These are the parks that provide access or views to the shores of Shuswa, Mara and Eagle River. And these provide opportunities for water-based activities like swimming, canoeing, picnicking, kayaking, etc. Um natural parks are similar to conservation parks. Um these are intended to protect and preserve the significant natural or cultural features. And these um for these parks, additional studies need to be done before going forward with any development. Road right away, walkway, beach access, these are the road right away that is currently used as an open space with or without ornamental landscaping and seating, somehow access to beach with opportunities for activities like picnicking and swimming. Neighborhood park service, um the immediate neighborhood within four hundred um eight hundred meter radius. And pocket parks are passive park spaces. Uh we currently have just one uh pocket park, which is the memorial park outside um the school. And these are very essential uh passive spaces and intended like for socializing, having a lunch, taking a break, etc. Greenway trail system, um these are the Sycamore's green ways. Um are smaller trails connecting different neighborhoods and places of interest. And then the next one is trails, which includes all the other trails within Sycamore's and others include um golf courses, school playgrounds, etc. Next coming to the park supply. Um so the District of Sycamore has thirty-eight point two five hectares of developed and undeveloped parks. Um this is not including the road right of ways and beach access. Although the total area um of these parkland appears to be significantly more, but the way it's distributed and the park services is not adequate. Um next is park distribution. So we calculated um one is population based uh parking and distribution. And then one is spatial distribution, just understanding how the parks are distributed within different neighborhoods. Um spatial analysis was uh done to understand the distribution of these parks uh based on the approximate distance that a resident walk. Um for example, um ten to twenty minute walk for um community recreation waterfront parks and then ten to fifteen for neighborhood parks. Based on the survey, fifty-seven percent of the respondents felt that sidewalks or pathways that get to their destinations were incomplete or sometimes did not exist. So some of the factors that discourage people uh from walking or biking around town was either lack of rest areas or not having enough shade, inadequate lighting, especially in winters, and speed and noise of the motor traffic. Um also, one major factor being highway going through the town, creating a major disconnect between different neighborhoods. Parks and facilities, especially for pedestrian bike and other non-moderized vehicle users. The next section is park inventory. So we have um an inventory of all the parks with some details on um location, area, play equipment, activities, parking and other features. And in some cases, some park specific recommendation based on survey responses. And that is a list of all the parks. Next, we have trail section, um which is a detailed inventory of the existing trails in and around Sycamore's. And also a list of proposed trails as well. Coming to the recommendation. Um the projects are categorized into three timeline categories. Um short, medium and long term, short being one to three, medium being three to seven and long being seven plus. Uh the first section being bylaws and policies. Under that, we have a couple of short term projects. So, okay. Updating Parks Bylaw number three nine three to reflect the current parks and new classification. Um the next one is updating community connectivity map within the OCP. Adding some guidelines and policies either within the parks file or traffic file for canopy protection and management of trees uh within park spaces and public realm. Reviewing the existing guidelines and policies related to um the same street tree protection. Also including some design guidelines for park spaces within OCP, uh which is focused on universal design and setted principles. Next medium term goal is to include climate change strategies along with the park design guidelines. Um this would include same canopy protection and management of street, which is also um helpful with urban heat management as well. Um the next recommendation is to consider uh public green infrastructure um as part of the housing strategy to offset increased density. For example, contributions to the neighborhood parks, services, trails instead of parkland dedications. Some other recommendations um are educational awareness, wayfinding and signage, uh Blue Waste Paddle Trail Project. I can talk a bit about each of these recommendations. Educational awareness is, um it includes um creating handouts or having online platforms to talk about invasive species within our communities. Also working in partnership with recreational programs and school district to promote and raise awareness of existing parks and trails, locations, special features and health benefits related to the use of trails. Wayfinding and signage, um uh with our survey responses, um they express the need for better wayfinding signs around town showing public parking spaces, trail connections, public boat launch, local businesses and other places of interest. So the recommendation here is to work with um Shuswa Trail Alliance and Sycamore's Development Corporation to create a wayfinding strategy for Sycamore's. Blue Waste Paddle Paddle Trail Project, um D O H has has previously worked with CSRD and Shuswa Trail Alliance on this project to create a Blue Waste Map. The purpose of this map was to identify some key entrances and exits um along the areas of Eagle River and Shuswa Lake for kayaking, paddle boarding and canoeing. And the recommendation is to continue working on this project to identify the existing hand launch areas and potential locations that could serve as a hand launch access points. Um some of the other recommendations include programming and design of undeveloped parks. Um a better beach park design to deal with high water issues and closures to community activities. Trail improvement and connected greenway trail system. And collaboration with heritage designation. So collaboration with heritage designation is actually um a partnership between, we're proposing a partnership between Old Sycamore Highway Trail and Brunel House because the Brunel House is already going through a heritage designation. So thinking about the possibilities of combining these two um and yeah, opportunities to connect existing Old Sycamore's Highway with the Brunel House um heritage designation. Um the last recommendation being winter design parks, um investigating ways to integrate existing park features for winter activities. And exploring finding opportunities for the same. That's the end.
Awesome. Thank you, Steffi. Counsel, any questions for Steffi?
Counsel Page. Steffi, thank you. Um this is, this is, uh I remember coming to the very first uh meeting. Um and not expecting all of all of the discussion and the sharing of everything that we have and this is very exciting. Um I guess um the only question I do have, I do remember outstanding because I'd never really thought about it that much myself was was a comment from Counsel Bailey about um needing more winter parks. So um and then, you know, looking at all of the feedback from the community because you you've done a good, you know, we've put it out there and we've had a fair chunk of feedback. Uh it stuck with me that there were a number of concerns about icy icy walking and getting exercise in the wintertime. So I'm throwing it out there like a broken record. Um where can we have a a winter park that enjoys winter but has safe safety? And I know where we could, but I'm just noting that. That was the one piece that I think we still haven't addressed, winter parks and safe exercise and walking in the wintertime. So thank you, though. It was
I can add to that comment because we did talk about winter parks and then we, I think we talked about focusing on one park like before the next winter. Um and I think there's possibility um for winter activities and beach park and also the um Finlessin Park.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh I just want to respond to that because I've lived for years on Finlessin Park since it was it was developed into a walking path and and we've had, we've had lots of broken hips and we've had some accidents on that, on those trails. No matter how hard we try to keep them, they they under the right wrong conditions, right wrong conditions, um it's still is, have to be. So um anyways, yeah, so that was that was my sort of thing that came to mind for that.
Thanks, Counsel Reed. Counsel Bailey?
Um yeah, I'm pretty big fan of this report. I have some questions around canopy protections and management, but that can wait for another time. Um I I think the I think the challenge with this report is how we're gonna action it. And you know, we talked about this at planning and development that I I was even surprised about some of the properties that we have and potential uh for those properties to actually become, you know, activated really and 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 for the community to start using them to their full potential. And I think where we are now is we have a fairly comprehensive inventory and an idea of what's possible. And now it comes down to what does counsel want to do with it? And I mean, I would really like us to at least have one project a year where we're doing something and we're, you know, recreation and uh trails or or something that we're adding to. And I think we already have a couple of those projects going on. But it's just something for us to think about. And and I mean, the one I would like to just put up there that I think we could action pretty quickly is that, you know, canoe and um stand up or, you know, paddleboard. action pretty quickly is that, you know, canoe and um stand up, you know, paddleboard launch and things like that, because we actually do have the property. And so there, there's some things that are within our means right now that I think we can do that would add a lot of benefit to the community and it's an amenity. Um but I, I just want to commend that. I think this was a very important project. Very happy with it, and I think it gives us a really good roadmap and I just want to make sure this doesn't, you know, stay on the shelf. And I think everyone is committed to implementing it. Um but yeah, thanks again.
Counsel McCabe?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Yeah, great report. Um it's good to have a document like that for sure. Couple of comments, Dog Park, I, I go there quite a bit. Sometimes parking is full there because people use it for uh non-motorized boat launching, like kayak launching. And people park there to uh stop, unload their bikes and then go bicycling down to Old Town Bay and back. And people park there for dogs, so um for no special reason, I've seen parking full there without a, any event or anything, right? And it would be easy to um increase the parking, easy and cheap. Uh just extend the fence line further, um well, not extend the fence line, but just add some more parking, just a little bit of fill and some more parking heading, heading su- south, I guess. It wouldn't be very expensive to fill it in and just add a little bit more parking. And then, of course, the fencing in that, down by the, the bridge there in the, in the north uh northwest corner. It's already landscaping everything down there. I know you tie the fence into nothing, but uh it would stop the dogs from running up in the road. They might get into the bush, but just, and so it wasn't in recommendations in the dog park section, so a couple of cheap fixes there. Wayfinding signs. Part of our community is um a retirement community. That Canada shows that about I think it's fifty five percent of our community is seniors. Uh I've seen some graph show that uh if, if you go from uh fifty five and above we're, we're at over sixty percent uh population of fifty five and above. So the wayfinding signs that are currently out there have very small font and for seniors walking along paths and stuff. There's too, and no disrespect to all the effort that Gords put into those signs, the recreation, but um there's too much information on one post and it, the fonts are too small to be useful, functional, uh in my opinion. I think we need to get bigger fonts and less messaging on these signs somehow. Need you to be critical when you're not doing it.
Thanks, Malcolm. Uh Gord, before I take and ship, uh ship on, uh Daryl, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, through the chair, just quickly on the fence by the bridge. Uh that is scheduled, it's on the list. There are some defects that have to be cleaned up at that bridge before we do that.
Right.
And the parking, we did extend it already to the north. We've got three extra spots, so that ditch line has been filled in and there, it is wider than it was last year. To the north, yeah, I think maybe now to the south. You look at it.
Hey, thanks. And thanks for looking after that dog park. We did get a complaint not that long ago of a visitor whose dog she let go in the dog park and it got out onto the highway, so it's neat to, that's perfect. Okay, go ahead. Gord, Counsel Pusheh, sorry.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh great job, Steffi. I, I really think this is a great, uh great document. Like you say, Ian says, I hope it doesn't sit on the, we do have a lot of really easy, easy projects we could knock off this year by, like you say, opening up the canoe park and, and maintaining it, you know, taking the chain down and and uh getting it used. There, there's lots of these little parks that we have and, and uh, and just get the public, you know, get the public involved and, and reviewing it themselves. Um I know uh Shu Shua Trail Alliance, uh we partnered with them on the wayfinding signs and we never did finish that to a point where there was supposed to be kiosks. And uh um part of the M R D T funding can go towards kiosks. And I know Carly's got it on the list, and that would be a big help if we could get three or four big kiosks. Yeah, like they have in Samar and, you know, the Shu Shua Trail Alliance and, and the C S R D uses nice kiosks in some of their parks. And then also ties in all the trail systems. So yeah, it, it, we got lots of work to do and uh there's some really easy, easy wins uh that we could do this year. And uh I just think you guys did a great job. Thanks very much, Scott and your team.
Go ahead, Steffi, and then.
On to that, um I did talk to Carly regarding the wayfinding and signage and we're hoping to find uh funding to create that strategy, uh because if we are able to create that strategy, that would influence a hierarchy of different signage and wayfinding for Sycamore's cater to um seniors, um like the legibility of the signs and stuff like that, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Steffi. Counsel Reed?
Through the chair, um again, great report. I really enjoyed it. I love that you guys included the schools in it. I think that, like, we kind of hit, you got, we, no, I'm not included in the week, uh the row, we um hit, like I love that the schools were involved within that. I am wondering too, when we talk signage, is there a possibility that Sycamore's can start, especially with parks putting our Q R codes on stuff? Because that is, when I go into a restaurant, I scan it and that I can walk up to a trail and put a phone up and then see where all my trails go to and how it works. Instead of, and then I've got it in my phone and then I can work my way through Sycamore's.
That would be amazing, but not sure, but yeah, I could add that as part of the.
For future, if we're looking, Gord, it's a, it's a, um, you know, something that maybe we can start involving when we're looking at our signs. Because that's kind of how the world's working now that I can, you know, and I'm old, so if I can do it, Mel seniors can do it.
I'm okay. Are you good? Um sorry, Counsel McCabe?
Yeah, just follow up on Counselor uh Rich's comment. Um Entree B is using QR codes for uh Entree B clips. So you go up to the, uh, a certain portion of the path of the Entree B clips, you do the QR code and it'll explain uh the significance where you are and what's going on around you, sort of thing. Um I think that could solve the font issue for seniors. I mean, even seniors are learning how to use it. Like I, I've learned, I got a few waitresses, like bring me a manual plate. Well, sir, it's right there. Why?
I, I'm just want to say that you are, I just to build on what you're basically saying is that in Q R codes, not only could we give more direction, we could give history. Right? And so I do believe that coming out of Together Shushwap, there was an actual project that a group took on to put Q R codes and indigenous history on signage all through the area. Now, I don't know how, if that actually was completed, but you could use Q R codes to put history, like history on as well, so.
Right, thanks. Counsel Bailey, did you have something else? No, anyone else?
QR codes and larger fonts.
I know, you know what? We're gonna do, add these, we're gonna attach these.
Yeah.
So you walk up, you just use these and then you just leave them. Maybe less expensive. That's an expensive option, just, just saying. Scott?
Just want to thank Steffi for all her hard work. Um I think I, I recognized, you know, pretty early when I got here that we needed an inventory and something like this. And I tasked Steffi with it and didn't give her much instruction or not a whole lot of help and resources along the way and she just took it and ran with it.
Wow, awesome. Nice. Steffi, thank you very much. Great job. Okay. Moving along, housing strategy implementation, secondary dwelling units and gentle infill. Scott, Health and Services Manager, take it away.
Uh this is originally Sarah Martin's presentation, but uh Sarah had an emergency today and couldn't come in, so uh this morning I realized that I was gonna make the presentation. Um I think there is a slideshow. The same one, but um as you know, the housing strategy was uh, was adopted by council in February twenty twenty three. So um this is the, the next step, the implementation of that uh, that housing strategy. Um and really today it's for the committee to consider the O C P and zoning amendments to implement the, the housing strategy and um and then give any feedback now and then we can bring this back to zoning amendments and just start some of the, the public consultation. Um so this is uh, this presentation, I believe the, the housing committee and the planning and development committee have already seen it. And uh, and both of them have uh, but their blessing for it to, to come to the committee, the whole. Um so these are the housing strategies, so strategy one point one enable diverse housing types and uh strategy three point one promote gentle infill and then to achieve those strategies, um some changes to the, the bylaws are required. Um so the, the short term actions are to update the R one zone and some of the residential use policies and uh, and then update the residential land use designations to allow for the, the infill. The increase in the total. So one of the big parts of this is amending their one in the O C P to allow for gentle info. And it's like, what is gentle infill? And it's adding, uh, you know, in the existing neighborhood, you can see the, the two, like you know, awful language houses or, or skinny houses, um you know, in a, in a residential zone. Uh top right, that's like a, a triplex that, you know, you drive by, you might think it's a single family dwelling, but actually houses three families. And then in the one on the bottom right, I think that might be like a six place where they've actually taken, you know, you know, your traditional really big house and uh, and garage and converted it to, to house, you know, six families instead of just, just one family. Um so that's what gentle infill could look like. I think if you drove around uh Sycamore's, uh Sarah's planning on taking the housing committee um around uh, around Sycamore's, and there's actually a couple of them that you drive by and you don't even realize that there's a second dwelling there. They're, they're actually bid in well, so I, I think it's a, a really good way to look at gentle infill. Um particularly in the three street areas where the, the properties are bigger. Um so this is the, the current R one zone, what uh, what the secondary suites could look like. Um you know, a duplex or a house with something in the basement. Um with the new zoning bylaw, it allows those detached streets where people have something in the backyard. Um you can see panhandle lots where, you know, some of the subdivision where their driveway is and giving access to their backyard or their front yard and you get a dwelling in there. Um and then uh just the other ones where um you're creating the smaller lots, creating smaller parcel sizes. And just getting more density, um and the, and the goal is for units per parcel. And that's actually, everybody remembers recently the province uh announced that they, they wanted a goal of four units per, per parcel. Um and really, um we're already working on it, so um we might be one of the, the leaders in the province on uh, on getting this uh getting this in place. Um so the zoning bylaw amendments, um just some tweaking to the, the zones um to allow for higher density, uh one is definition of floor area and it's like moving basements right now. Basements uh is included in the floor area, so when you're looking for that increase in the percentage, um it means you don't get as much by removing basements from that calculation, uh we should be able to encourage more suites. Um tweaking the definition of secondary suites. Uh and then again with the density, so right now it's, it's uh two uh dwelling units per parcel. We'd increase that to four dwelling units per parcel and then uh some rules and regulations, um just, just implementing those in the, in the bylaw. Um and then the O C P amendment, so in addition to the universal design principles, um and then um adding, updating, so section three, um talks about um when the O C P was done in twenty sixteen, talks like, you know, as a little preamble of what uh, what the existing situation is in Sycamore's, so updating that with some current numbers. But then also adding in the housing targets from the, the housing needs assessments and the housing strategy, adding those into the official community plan. So when this council or future council is looking at the policies, they can say, hey, these are our targets and, and let's work towards them. Um and yeah, expanding the medium density residential zone, that's a, that's a pretty big one. And then in the future, I'm looking at as of right zoning, which would be um kind of a, an idea that even though you're not zoned for it, you have the, the room to do it and you can just move forward with the project and not have to go through rezoning. But that, that's kind of a, a future idea, but um definitely the, the median density zone, expanding that zone provide that opportunity in the future. Sarah like states, it's sprinkled, it's, it's, you're not gonna have like some big project. The, the picture in the middle is kind of what it would look like. There's, you know, say that's Rhoma Crescent or the tree streets. And you just, you know, you add something here and something there and slowly you increase that density, uh in the building types. See in this drawing, the top left, I think is a triplex, they have, you know, a unit in the basement, a unit in the middle, a unit on top. We see that, something like that would uh, would fit in, just float anywhere in, in Sycamore's.
All right, that was an emergent update.
Nobody get up and ran out of the room.
No, just kidding.
And then uh, so this is the current medium density uh designation is the purple and the proposal would be to, you see that the difference where you're going from, kind of just on the uh west side of Highway ninety seven and it actually um increasing the area for medium density residential. Um basically in, in all the traditional R one zones and uh, and that would bring you up to the, the four units per uh, per parcel. And um yeah, that's my presentation or Sarah's presentation, um but obviously the next step would be uh bring this to council and then doing the, the public consultation part. Counselor McCabe and Counsel Rich are on the, the housing committee, so they might be able to answer some of the questions as well. Um but yeah, I think, you know, this is a, a pretty quick turnaround from, you know, having the striking the housing committee and then having the housing strategy and then now we're moving quickly with the, the next steps and uh and yeah, hopefully, you know, aiming to reach those, those housing targets that uh have been identified as a, as a need in the community and, and also keeping up with the province with uh, you know, their mandates that are coming forward.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Beach and Counsel McCabe?
Um, yeah, no, I, I, I think it, I think it's great. The infill idea is, is great. Um I have a question and maybe I've just missed it. Um when we talk about housing, I mean, I always look at the downtown development as well as a potential place for housing and revitalizing downtown by bringing people living above businesses. And I, I, if I missed it, because I missed it, if it's addressed in here, have we addressed that idea of trying to encourage um new builds in our downtown area to be able to go up a level and put housing above, because right now the buildings can't there, right? They don't have the foundation.
Go ahead, Scott.
I guess each that. Um so uh the new zones, like the C one and the C two zone, they, they do allow for multi-family. So commercial on the bottom and then multi-family units on top. And usually when people come in and they're looking to do developments, so an example would be the um, the dairy by the Chevron, when they came in, they, they had an idea and they, they wanted to do the dairy clean and, and I think it was very surprising to say, oh you're gonna be allowed to put units on top. It could, could help you with, because workers obviously an issue and could help you with getting your workers in and they, they jumped on that and uh, so definitely um something that uh is, has been implemented in our, our building and um yes, will be encouraged.
Okay, okay. I just, I just wondered if we needed incentives to get people to that way or not, so.
Counsel McCabe?
Thank you.
Yeah, just two comments on, on, yeah, I think businesses are recognizing that in the service industry that you need to accommodate your employees or you might not have a business. I think A and W is doing that in town. At Beach Chicks, they have some accommodation in the back for their seasonal employees. Uh Best Western is doing that with their new development. I, I think it's just the way, not just in Sycamore's, but it with inner housing crisis, I think businesses are recognizing that. And I, I just wanted to say that this was brought to the planning, you did mention that, but this was brought to the planning committee and the planning committee uh did endorse it, support it, so uh, and yes, um I'm very pleased and uh it took about eight months with the housing committee and then into uh council and the planning committee and, and uh the, this can get endorsed by council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Counsel Bailey, go ahead.
Sorry. Just a couple of things. I brought it up at planning and development and I asked Sarah the question about the surface areas or the maximum amount of billable area. I think you have it pegged at what, forty or? surface areas or the maximum amount of billable area. I think you have it pegged at what, forty or sixty? I can't remember. And I wonder if we should be looking at increasing that maximum billable area on a lot. And I know her answer to me was, you know, we really, you haven't really encountered that yet. But if, if I'm thinking about as we go forward and we're going to be trying to have these lots eventually go up to four units or even maybe more, maybe, maybe we do want to get five pluses on there, whether we should be limiting the floor or the stuff buildable area to that lower, whether we should be giving ourselves a little bit of, uh, extra wiggle work. I'll leave that with you to think about it, but that's something I want to highlight. Um, the other thing is, and I brought this up at planning and development too, is for us to map out where we actually have the sewer water capacity and all of these things. So we can, um, you know, target those areas or we can find people who want to invest in these types of developments to direct them there. Right? Um, I, I think the problem with the E B kind of just blanket, you know, four units on every lot, let, let it rip, is it just doesn't work that way. I mean, electricity doesn't work that way. Water sewer, it doesn't work that way. There's finite capacities to all this. But if we can actually identify within our systems where we do have slack or if we have slack, um, then we might be able to encourage developers or homeowners that are kind of looking for that property to kind of do that in the future. So I, I think that would be useful. And I don't think every area of town would be in the same, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong on that. Uh, not every area of town would have the same capability when it came to water sewage and, you know, electrical capacity. So having it, um, kind of map out what, what does, what we can actually upsize pretty quickly, I think would be helpful.
Do we get a lot of inquiries, Scott? Like folks looking to build carriage homes or secondaries or spending their housing on their property? Is there a lot of calls for that? Do we get a lot of calls?
I think most people are looking at something in their home, like, like, uh, a basement suite, right? That's kind of the, the first thing people think of. But we are, we are getting, yeah, the, the ideas of the, the carriage homes and, and things like that. And, um, another project that Sarah's working on is looking for a partner, um, to come up with a, uh, you know, designed and ready to go plans for, for a carriage home. Um, so she's looking at actually, you know, having a set of plans here that someone can connect. Here's five designs for carriage homes that, you know, have been approved by the building official. They'll fit on most lots in sickness and, uh, and partner somebody to offer that out to people. So, yeah, Sarah's definitely fun about it.
That's a really good idea. Councillor Bailey?
Um, yeah, just building on. Thanks for reminding me of the other questions. Can we get fourplex designs? Like, is that something, I mean, we're, we're trying to get units on these R one residential. Should we be trying to say, here's a quick path to build a four unit home? Is that something you guys have thought about?
I, I don't think we're looking at fourplexes. Um, and then, and it gets tricky with each property's different. So I think a fourplex, you know, it's going to be slightly more complex and, um, yeah, really, really site specific. Um, you know, if you had a quarter acre lot and you want to put a fourplex, um, and we had a bunch of vacant quarter acre lots, it might make sense to do that. Um, but I think this, um, the project Sarah's working on is really just looking at, you know, that, that carriage house, that, that unit that can fit in most backyards where we know there's, there's space and, and, you know, people might be open to that idea. Um, as soon as you start, building gets bigger, adding more units, the site really starts to have more streams.
More question. Um, and I, I brought this up before and, uh, councillor McCabe just touched on it is about, um, commercial properties wanting to have space for workers or seasonal workers. I, I fall in that category, obviously, you know. Why can't we have separate staff accommodations on properties that we allow it? And it sounds a little self-serving because I actually have that ability. Um, and it's something we're, I'm going to be looking at as the years go forward. But there seems to me like there's a lot of commercial properties with awesome big plans that they own already where they could be actually adding in housing and some of our zoning just doesn't allow it. And, and I think we should look at that because I think that's going to help. Anytime we get housing built anywhere, I think it's a good thing in this town, right? Whether it's on a commercial law that we allow because they want to solve their staffing problems or it just becomes part of what's expected, right? On a seasonal business and we are such in, such a seasonal town that you do have to offer some people those seasonal accommodation. But I think then that can turn into something that's helping alleviate some of our housing problems overall, right? Um, and, and I, I think there's a lot of commercial properties in town that could fall into that category where there's space to allow housing. But the zoning doesn't necessarily allow that. Like we've had that when we're, you know, the seat frontage road, they had to get special permission to put a house or a trailer there and now going through, through others. Why don't we just kind of figure out a way to allow this, then citing permits and all these other things that we have to do. Uh, but to kind of activate those sites that were encouraging housing to be built. And that's, so I guess that's my other comment, um, that I think there's some possibility there in town. Thanks.
Councillor Bushel?
Yes, through the chair, yeah, all good points. Um, I just want to do, you know, thanks Scott and his team and, and all the people that put this together. There's a lot, a big group of people that put this together and, uh, just, you know, really appreciate all their time and every, and effort to, to get us where we are today. So yeah, be nice to get this, uh, approved and passed for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? All good. Scott, thank you very much. Great presentation. Okay. Moving forward, Silver Sands Road, rail, rail, railway crossing. C A O Bennett, you want to take it away?
Oh, yes. Uh, most definitely. Okay. Sure. This is just a really quick update, just giving everybody the heads up. So as part of, so we have two crossings, one at Hillier Road and, uh, one at Silver Sands. Uh, you will notice there was some postings that we had them closed because they, the C P was doing their inspections. Um, so when doing their inspection, they noticed, uh, there was some work that needed to be done on the sands crossing specifically. Uh, maybe Daryl can speak to the, the details of it because he was there on the inspection. Um, and we have a contract with, uh, C P as the, the road, uh, the railway was there and then we wanted to cross it. So we have a road that crosses, we have a crossing agreement saying that, you know, that we have to pay monthly to cross that, the town does, and that we pay for any maintenance or repairs on that crossing. So, uh, they are closing that crossing for a, a period tomorrow, May eleventh. Uh, and there will be a charge, will get charged for the repairs and they're estimating those repairs to be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What?
Yes. So they're quite, we're not being billed for them this year. They will go into next year's financial plan. Uh, so we'll see what it ends up by costing, but they did give us a range and we don't really have much choice in it. Um, the good news is, is the Hillier Road crossing is good to go. Excellent. I don't know if Daryl has anything else to add on that, but I just wanted to give everybody the heads up.
Yep. Thank you. Daryl, do you have anything?
Through the chair, I did meet on site with Nicole and, and, uh, the rep from C P. Uh, he did an assessment and he showed us a couple of signs that were weathered and old. And he showed us a little bit of broken concrete and I really can't think of too much else that I saw that wasn't.
Hundred and fifty?
It just, it seemed like a lot. We don't have, I, you know, uh, we don't have the ability to go up and do it ourselves. It's, it's their crossing. They were there first. So, uh, they told us what it'll cost and I, I guess they're coming tomorrow to do it.
Okay. So I guess there's not a lot we can do about that. We just sit tight and wait to see what happens when the bill comes.
Oh, I have a comment on it. I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, I'd like to, I mean, it'd be nice. I mean, do they give us a work plan or a scope of work? Why they say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Or they just say, hey, give me a hundred and fifty grand and have a nice day.
Through the chair, do you remember seeing anything formalized in terms of a layout? It was much beyond the concrete and that including any fencing or that's down the road with the whistle thing? Yeah.
So I would like Sack to request detail of what the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think that's reasonable. We're going to pay that. I'd like to at least say to taxpayers, by the way, this is what C P charged us and here's what we got. I mean, obviously C P, we have a crossing agreement so that binds our hands a little bit, but at the very least, they should be saying, here's why it costs a hundred and fifty grand and the justification of it. I don't think that's unreasonable at all for us to ask. So.
No, and I kind of assume that you guys had that, but you don't, we don't.
Have a ballpark estimate, gave you what they're going to do. So there is a, a ballpark of the work that's going to be done.
Well, but not itemized and, yeah, like I, I, I think they need to give a bill. Yeah.
Correct. So when, when they've, they've confirmed they're not going to bill us until next year and we'll request a detail. I mean, you want to know what we're paying for.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And I, yeah. Councillor Ridge?
Through the chair, um, I'm wondering, have we ever had to pay for work on the crossings before? And is it something that we should be looking to add into our budget? Like, is it kind of a ten year thing or a five year thing? Like it's, you know, like I know I'm going to change oil in my car every couple of months and then I need winter tires. Is it something that we can kind of project? Like, have we ever had an issue before with this?
Through the chair, I don't recall ever paying a bill for any repairs at any of the intersections. I know the one on uh, on Soul School Road, I, I think we paid most of the, the arm costs for that. That was their decision to do that. We knew it was coming. Uh, I'm not sure what their schedule is and, and what kicks off, you know, immediate work, but they looked at that intersection, said, oh, we could do that one quickly. So they're here already.
So.
Hard to plan for, but maybe a little reserve for that in the future.
And we have, yeah, contingency on roads though too. So, um, councillor Bushel?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I agree with E and it's a breakdown would be, uh, for sure. Uh, you know, when you're talking about a three percent tax increase, uh, for next year. And, uh, and like, maybe we should maybe reach, I mean, I'm an iron, you're golden and just say, what do you guys, what do you guys do? Or even the C S R D, you know, do they have, have to pay? Is there communities on both sides? So just, you know, just, uh, and then maybe that, when we write a letter asking for the breakdown, let them know that we're a small community and three percent is is a massive for our, for our taxpayers. Just my thought.
Yep, absolutely. Councillor McCabe?
So Hillier Road was improved or it is safe or, or it doesn't need work? What, where does that leave us in this process for, uh, you know, whistle?
Um, so through the chair, that, that's completely separate and the inspection of the crossing. So I know Nicole was looking into, we're working on that. Yes, we've met somebody onsite and we'll work. We'll have a report probably at the next committee meeting.
Thanks. Thank you.
If anyone else? Okay. So we just need details. Deets?
Hey, thank you.
Okay. The healing center design update. Kelly, continue on.
Yeah. And I do have, uh, Brian Marr, our project manager online. Brian, are you there? Oh, see him there.
Hey there. I'll change to a view so I don't look like one. Okay. Oh, and Kelly, I sent you some other images too. I'll just actually resend that.
It's in the corporate services.
This one?
Sorry, I didn't think I'd quite be on the agenda yet. So sorry. Apologies, Chair and Council.
Worries.
Should be useful to you. Okay. So sorry about that. Um, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to communicate Douglas Cardinal's vision for the updated healing center imagery to you all. Uh, this was a work in progress which arose as a result of discussions that happened. Um, as, as a result of a need to adapt the location of the building within the two hundred main street site. So Douglas wanted to share some words. She, uh, he and Kelly and I had a long conversation and this is adapted from this conversation. So I'll just read it to you. And the full conversation is available by recording, but uh, Douglas says, all my buildings have a relationship between the forms that create the people and that by that he means all the peoples. Everything in nature is geometric and based on the intricate patterns of circles and curves. Meaning in his vision of the, of nature, there are no right angles. The form of the circle is very present in this building and is used at the entrance and expressed in the gentle curves of the walls, which he hopes that evoke the hills of the Shushab Valley. And then his further discussion on the building, uh, follows. So when Douglas, uh, was in Sycamore with the Doya, he was very much struck by the presence of water and how waters influenced the valley and in particular Sycamore, the household capital of the world. So the relationship water is very present as the organic influence in my vision of your healing center. Water is the defining feature of Sycamore. The land was shaped and formed by the rivers and the lakes. Water flows in the lake and the wind blows across the top of the water. Water is the highway of the first people and we continue to remain connected with water in many ways. I wanted to have this element expressed in the building form. You can feel the expression of water flowing, waves forming, cresting along and across the walls and the roof of the building. The blue glass also reflects the water in the lakes and the rivers. So that is the basis of his visioning, uh, which is very, very keyed off of what he'd done before, but he had the opportunity with more time to evolve that visioning. Uh, and Kelly, I don't know if you saw that, the set of images that I sent you that attached to this PowerPoint, but they're upgraded images from the ones that you and I had from Douglas last week.
Um, Brian, no, I have yet to receive them from you.
Sarah, I, I, Sarah had them. I don't know if she can open or I can forward to you. Sorry.
Um, can you, you know how to share your screen?
Yeah. Yeah, I can screen share mine.
If not, I have the ones from last week.
Okay. No, I will share screen. So let me play presentation slideshow. Uh, so this image, let me see if I can get it to play slideshow play from start. There we go. So this first image is the updated imagery and it shows the view of the building, looking at it from Main Street. So if you were across Main Street, this would be the main entrance into the lobby. And then as you flow through, so this is an, uh, an open atrium, if you like, there's going to be, uh, uh, he envisions a dome ceiling or open to the stars within this space, not quite defined. And then as you travel through the lobby to the community space, this would be the entrance to the community space. So you could independently enter it. This is what Douglas is talking about is evoking the hills and the waves underneath it. Where the, where the hills reach down and touch the water. So it's seamless and the water is represented by the blue glass, which will be multicolored, dark and light blue glass that creates that imagery anchored by the rocks, which would be, uh, a concrete or, or a rock type stone material on the base. So you have the stone with the water, the rolling hills and the imagery evoking that from Main Street. This is the image now, if you were looking at it from the parking lot. So this is the view east. So again, you can see the main entrance here where this is, gives you a bit of idea of the scale of the building. It is a one-story building with the community room lifted higher. And so you can see the layers of the building. So that's again, evoking the imagery of the hills, the rolling water and the waves cresting. This is the entrance into the, um, medical, um, side of it. This is again, the public entrance to the community side and lobby. This is the image looking from the north. So if you were looking out, uh, from the condominium side or the alley along there, this is the, the, what we would call the back of the building, which is still beautiful. Again, representing that imagery. Here you can clearly see the, the crest of the wave coming through. You can see the waves flowing through along the top, the wave cresting as it falls over and into the lake with the wind blowing across it. Here's another view. This is the view now from the park or the, the green space. So again, the remainder part of two hundred main street. This, this one really gives you good imagery of how it flows and the building, the cresting. I believe he's going to re- reinterpret and, and put another wave crest here, which you don't see in this image that he's working on. But this gives you a very clear idea of how he, he sees this flowing. Uh, and then this material is going to be a durable, um, wood grained, either metal or board of some type, but it won't be exact, it won't be made of wood in order to ensure the long-term, um, use of it and, and wear and tear on the building. So it doesn't need to be replaced within a decade or so. Questions?
Counsel, any questions? Okay, Counsel McCabe?
Yes, I do. Um, how are we doing with the design cost, the, the cost? So we're getting more into the, you know, design of the exterior, if you will. Is that impacting our, our costs or where are we at?
A couple of things happened. So of course we had to redesign the entire building. Douglas Cardinal understands the nature of it in that we've changed the building design to respect the existing, First Nations presence on a portion of the Main Street site. He being a First Nations and residential school survivor has agreed to donate most of his time to redo the design. We don't have the final bill yet, but it's going to be very much discounted from the original design because he wants the healing center to go forward. Relative to the balance of design, the development permit design is being done with Scott Builders and that will be submit already by the twelfth of May. And I believe that cost will be also significantly discounted. I don't have the final dollars yet, though, Counsel and Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is, uh, before council today, just for their, their information and their high level blessing. If there's anything that they see that they don't like, because our plan is to have this in front of the planning, the revised development permit in front of the Planning and Development Committee next week, the seventeenth. And then to bring it to the regular council meeting on the twenty-fourth for the actual development permit, because then after that, we can actually start with construction drawings and starts, because we haven't really spent of this, you know, seven point some million dollar project. We've only spent four hundred thousand or even less than that. Uh, so we'll start spending some money once the development permit is approved and we'll get into the construction drawing piece. So I just wanted everybody to know where we were, because our goal is to still be in the ground in the fall.
Perfect. Yeah, sounds great. Okay, uh, Counsel Rich?
Through the chair, thank you. Um, and it's a very layman's question, but this is designed for our weather and snow. And then it's going to be, the building is going to work for our, um, how our, like how our weather is here in the valley.
Yes, it's designed specifically for the environment. So I, I think Kelly has some better images of what the materials are going to, going to be, but it's going to be all weather, four season material.
Great, thank you. Uh, Counsel Beach?
Uh, through the chair. I'm just, uh, you mentioned, uh, domes, open domes, uh, and to the stars, which I love the idea, but I'm trying to get a visual of what the rooftop will actually look like.
Uh, yeah, so it, it, it will be open. Let me just, uh, reshare an image if I may. Actually, maybe what I'll do, Kelly, is I'll share yours.
I can share mine.
Yeah, I think, cause you had, you had the, the, the less detailed image, but you had, you had the bird's eye views. So the, so this is, this is the skeleton imagery, not the renderings, but if you click to your next slide, you can kind of see on, on the next slide how.
Working on it.
Yeah. So there you can see where, how the, there's two levels of roof structure. Uh, and you can see windows that look into the, the community room, which allows light to come in from the east towards the setting sun, which is very important to First Nations people. And then you can also see where at the front entrance, whereas there's that curve. So what they're trying to do is decide what is the best way to adapt the use of that space, whether we leave it open air. So it's open to the stars or whether we put a roof over it, uh, with a, with a curved roof or a flat roof and then paint imagery on it that, that, um, creates homage to the creator, uh, which Douglas would prepare for us. So those are the elements that are still up for discussion that will come out really as we get more into the interior layout and design of it. But that kind of shows you how they see it going to the, uh, opening up to the, to the atmosphere.
Thank you. Counsel Bailey?
Yeah, so when, uh, maybe this is a question for Kelly. When can we release this updated information like on our website? I mean, there's a lot of questions in the community, like we're making really significant changes to this project. So I just wonder when, I mean, you, obviously we have quite a few drawings. How can we get this out into the public domain? I, I don't even have this yet, or I don't think council has this yet, because you just got it.
This is a great question, Ian. It's hot off the press. So as, as we had to change the look of it, we had to go back to Douglas, which took some time to get, get him to make, so, so we are at a, so once we get these development permit drawings here this next week, so it'll all be public, we'll all update our website with all new information. So within the next week or two.
Okay, so could we have this public before we do the development permit coming up at planning and development? I, I, I'm just trying to think about process here and, and to have this, you know, information out since you want to have the development permit approved next week and then week after.
Correct, correct. I mean, the timings, timings up really to count, right? So if we need more time, we're fine with that. We just want to make sure the project is moving forward. So yeah, this is a public meeting now. So these visuals, I just, we just got them, so I didn't have time to go on the agenda, but I will get some more revised ones, because Brian's also working with Douglas. He has even some more recent ones that I haven't seen yet. So it's better to get some nicer looking ones and get that on our website.
And just one further question, because I, I, I had a couple of people contacting me this week about consultations about what goes in the building. Are we, I know this was something that was brought up in the election and I'm not sure if the last council committed to it, what is our consultation kind of plan for the building going forward?
Uh, oh, oh, just, I know that there was consultation around the interior design, the programming of the, of the building with Dr. Avine, um, Satoya. Um, that would have been in the fall of twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, regarding the consultation, there was comments about, um, taking it to the public for the green space design, that there would be public input on that, if I'm not correct, Kelly.
That's so, Ian, are you asking what, what's going inside the building? Like?
Well, maybe I'll, I'll just relay the, the questions that I got from a couple of people is that they're under the impression, rightly or wrongly, I'm not sure if that was the previous council that, uh, that, uh, committed to this, that there would be another town hall meeting about the services and what the actual, uh, contents of the building or what, what that is going to kind of look like. Um, because I mean, we said we have the outside of it, but there is questions around programming and, and, and what does that involve? So that was the question that was directed to me. I don't know the answer to that and I'm not sure if we've, you know, developed what that looks like going forward, if there is going to be another public consultation piece or, or not.
Um, just speaking from, I, I don't recall that.
Okay.
But I do know that, um, Kelly, do you want to grab this one as far as what's going inside?
And I'm trying to find, find this so far, because there's actually been a lot of work and a lot of public input already in terms of what's, what's inside. We've been capturing this, I, I think for the last few years. And I, we know our medical clinic is going in there and it's going to increase in size. We know that there's going to be a traditional healing space that will be in there, the community space, there's a locum, locum space. And then there's additional space that we're, we're working with Eagle Valley. So their services can, can come in there as well, Eagle Valley Resource Society. And we should know within the next little bit whether Interior Health is interested and offering their services, public health. Uh, and everything that Interior Health does at Parkland Mall and moving that into the healing center.
Okay, so we're talking to Eagle Valley.
They've been involved the whole, the whole, the whole time. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, that's a root. Um, uh, a design committee was assigned at one point, but it was, it was professionals, right? For services to look at, to look at what services, uh, would make sense in there. Public, I think there were, uh, there were town halls. There were a couple of town halls for the public, but there also was a design committee and we had six of us on that, that were professionals, uh, from, from, uh, in, excuse me, Interior Health, um, and, uh, Karen Eastland was on there and Eagle Valley Community Support, Janet and I were on there and Colleen Bailey for Young Family, or not Bailey. One of our Bunbury, uh, who deals with young families and, and babies and stuff. All sat on this and Phaedra Idson, who was with the seniors housing. So we had a professional design committee to look at services and to actually look at some possible workflows inside. So we've already done that work, but we haven't met for a long time. And now we've redesigned, so, um, that is definitely a piece. And then the rest of it, I think we were waiting for Interior Health to come on board, because we knew we wanted their services in there. So, and, and so that's kind of why we couldn't take it out to the public, basically. But work has definitely been done on the interior design and the flow, the flow through the building, which is really important. Counsel Bailey?
Just, uh, so we started off with a, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, a twenty-five thousand, uh, twenty-five thousand square foot plan. And are we down, where are we at now on a fifteen thousand or?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So the, the grant applications of twenty-five thousand, we never really had any plans with twenty-five thousand. And then when we did our assessment, what we're doing is, and we, we've got an approved scope change for fifteen thousand. It's all, it's all good. So it's still at fifteen thousand. It hasn't changed the size. We're trying to, um, create efficient spaces that are multifunctional. So we can offer the same amount of services, but have multifunctional spaces.
Okay.
In our, yeah.
We're still at the fifteen thousand that we've talked about.
Thousand square feet, correct.
And there were some, uh, in the, in the grant writing itself, there were some things that aren't going in, like it's, it's, the, the, the scope has changed somewhat.
And that's why I'm asking about getting this information out there, because I know it's where it might have started and what people were thinking and where it is now is it's, it's in a different realm. I mean, it's, it, there's, I think it, it, it helps us a lot to get the information out, the design out, the, whatever, the rough kind of thoughts about what's inside. I, I think that would be a benefit to have. And it certainly would have, in my opinion, a benefit to have that out prior to us doing development permits, you know. I, I just think, um, in the terms of the process, it'd be nice to have all that out, that it comes to planning and development, that it comes back to council. And this is a period where if people had thoughts, concerns, this would be a good time to have some of those concerns brought forward and then dealt with.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Counsel Bay. Uh, Counsel Evans?
Hello, thank you. I, um, I hope you can hear me okay. The, um, the question I had for Brian was, Brian, the, uh, the curvy, um, the, the, the hills on top, um, uh, in this design that we're looking at today, is that a, um, uh, I guess a pseudo curve on the top? So it's like the old Western buildings where there's pseudo, is the roof actually curved?
The, the, the roof is actually flat.
Okay.
So, so the roof itself is flat. And then, yeah, the parapet, or as you say in the old Western, the, the parapet is there and it screens the mechanical units above, but it does, it does serve the, the function of creating the, the barrier between the edge of the roof and the walls. So, so a portion of it is, as you say, um, false parapet to create that imagery. But a portion of it is fundamental to the building structure. So everything up, up, I would say, if you, you need it about eight inches above the top of the roof to create the fastening of the roof to the walls and above that, that is the decorative element.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And, uh, may I ask one more question, Mr. Chair?
Please, sir.
Yep.
Okay, um, when it comes to, uh, um, some of the stuff inside as well, um, it was long ago decided there'd be things like, uh, physiotherapy in there and that kind of thing as well to just augment the point of the building to be a medical center. Um, I think, again, it's important to reiterate that, um, this is not going to be a drug rehab facility. Um, well, that's the one thing that we have to keep pounding on, because that's the disinformation that's out there and it's stubborn. And we have to just let people know, know this is, the healing center is a medical facility, but it's not a drug rehab facility, which, uh, creates a necessary fear of people.
That's correct. Yeah, there, there's no drug rehabilitation. There's overnight, there's no overnight stay in this, in this building. So it, it's, uh, I'm, I'm just going to share quickly. I don't know if this image came up. Do you see my image on screen? This is, this is the original programming from the building, which remains true today. The configuration has changed. But this shows where there was one locum residence in the space. The, the, the original design showed too. This is, this goes back to May twenty twenty-two, this particular image. It had the community center in the green here. It, uh, the blue was staff and support services, so restrooms, lunchroom, staff room, conference room, lobby area. The purple is all the primary care health clinic and the, the First Nations Healing Center. And all these elements are preserved in the building. So this, this is the slightly more rectangular shape. It has gotten more square. There is actually a programming layout for this, but these are the elements that were, were shown to the community at large uh, in twenty twenty-two, spring twenty twenty-two. And this continues to be the consistent intention for what's going to go within the building. So none of that has varied. Uh, and I believe there has been quite a bit of, in, in dialogue back and forth between the DOS, certainly within the professional community in terms of the doctors and BCIHA and Eagle Valley, but it, it also has been articulated clearly to the community at large, what's going into the building. So I share that image to you. And then there is one that's been updated relative to the programming as it fits in the new building. It's all the same program.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel Beach?
Thank you. Through the chair, um, that design process uh, that the design committee went through never did end up going to council. Because we had to hold up because of interior health. Yeah. So that, so there was a whole process that we went through with the other design of the building to ensure, um, that we could have usage of that, that building when the clinic was, we didn't have to have the whole building open to, to have access to certain things that the public would want to use after hours or before hours. I think that that interior design needs to go back to, um, a design committee. Because it doesn't look uh, familiar and we worked hard on that.
So I can just, that's a very old drawing that.
Yeah, it was. So there has been work on that, Brian, since May of twenty-two.
He knows. He's thought it out. He's just showing what's.
We need to revisit it if we've got interior health on.
And the reality is, any design we do in, inside is irrelevant if interior health is now coming in and they want three thousand. So we're going to have to do that again, have to work around.
Yeah, there'll have to be work. The, the design evolved. So here's this, just again, I'll just for a quick example, this kind of shows the evolution of the design based on the old layout, which now, the, based on the configuration change of the physical envelope has changed. But this kind of shows the, the development as you move through it. So this here shows the Drishna healing element. This shows the community. This shows the community rooms, this showed the locum suites. This was the hydrotherapy, uh, this, there, there's a welcome desk and invitation in lobby. So it was developed and then we, we put it on hold once we knew that this building shape no longer was. Uh, a viable opportunity for the building because of the restrictions that became. Uh, apparent from the archaeological investigation. So I, I agree with you, Counselor Beach. We, there needs to be re-engagement. There are two key stakeholders that have not been. Uh, attentive in the process, being our First Nations partners and B C I H A. They need to really be at the table for, uh, the D O S to, to get to the end process without designing in a vacuum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bushel.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, Brian, uh, just wanted to, thanks for the, thank you for the update. Um, I just want to. Uh, add to Siobhan or Counselor Rich's, uh, uh, concerns about the. I always remember in the beginning when we talked to Douglas Cardinal and yourself and Scott Builders about the, uh, material issues. And we have a ve- very, very high humidity here in the wintertime and everything swells, anything wood swells. So we are always concerned about that. We did bring that up. And, um, and then of course, all of, with the curved walls and the curve, you know, the parapet, the flashing is really difficult, uh, on curves. So it's just.
And, and nobody wanted, wanted wood more than Douglas Cardinal, but maybe, um. Kelly, can you just show the material that we're considering right now? Cause I know you've got that in your, in your deck.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to find a modern material that achieves the same look and feel, but provides for curvability, durability. And, uh, weather temperature sensitivity.
I've got it on the screen here.
And there's lots of materials that, that curves and look like wood. So, yeah, just, just to, you know, a caution, again, just a reminder. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I guess our, our, our concern is getting this communicated out to the public as soon as possible. I know that this is a public meeting, but perhaps on social media, we could get it. Just grab a couple of these updates moving forward. These are the next steps. Just so that we, so that we can keep the process going as quickly as, as, as we are, so. But just making sure that we're informing the public as we go.
Yeah. And Brian, if you could send me the, the most updated renderings that you have from Douglas, so then we can put something together for our website.
Will do.
We appreciate it.
I just thought those today, so.
Yeah, no, all good. Thank you for sharing them.
Yeah, Council, you're good. Everybody's good. Brian, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
It's always a pleasure. I'm looking forward to spending summer out there.
Please pass on our thanks to Douglas Cardinal for, uh, helping with the costs.
Yeah, Doug, yeah. So, and, and so Douglas's fee was, I think a hundred and fifty thousand. I think he's going to charge ten.
Oh.
So he, he, he really believes in the healing center and. Uh, so he's waiving the bulk of his fees. Basically, he's, it, it's just his, uh, staff cat time is all he's charging, nothing for the design.
Um, thank you so much.
Council appreciates that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
He really hopes that, uh, that this project happens, so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate the time. Bye for now.
This is, this is such an exciting project, just having a new clinic in our community and being able to attract. Doctors, because they're going to have this brand new facility to be working in, in a beautiful location. And that work-life balance where they don't have to manage the clinic, they can just manage their patients. So I'm, I'm super excited about this. Go ahead, Counselor Beach.
I mean, this has to do with the healing, healing center, sorry, but it, it doesn't, and it does. We have a new dentist, we have a new dentist coming into our other building. Are we talking to him? Is he interested in actually having a space in the healing center?
Uh, yeah, so we, we've been approached by a few, few people, pharmacists, dentists, that are potentially interested in the healing center. So step one is we need to make sure interior health is on board, because we have to make sure we have enough space to house these people.
Yeah.
Right? So, so, yeah, there are a few, few people that are potentially interested. So step one is interior health and I'm pushing them very hard and we need an answer really quick here, so.
And that is awesome. And tenants do help with the cost, right? So not only panel of patients, but tenants do help. So, yeah, hopefully this will be.
And if, yeah, and if interior health is, is not interested, which would be a shame, but that's okay. Uh, we do have a list of people that are interested also in coming to, to the health center that provide dental physio, that type of thing. So there will be opportunities to have health-related services in that building regardless. Navigate through that.
Okay, one quick.
Yeah, just, I, I mean, I certainly hope interior health is interested, because it would make a lot of sense for that.
Yeah.
Uh, to be in that building, I think not only for them, but also for our community members.
I a hundred percent agree.
And a full functioning, um, uh, lab, like not, not full functioning, I mean, but I.
That's right.
And five days a week where they are taking blood five days a week, you know, so. Um, Counselor Beach.
I, oh, it's already on, okay. I just want to, um. I don't know what I want to say now, let's move on. I've lost the.
Conversation, that's exciting news, new designs here. Um, okay, so council reports, Counselor Rich. Uh, sorry. Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you guys. Hey, Counselor Beach.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe that's.
So that was me going, oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, actually, Vaughn and I have, have worked on this drug awareness, uh, education together. And, um, you've, I've given you all of the poster that is already out through the interagency. It's, it's out quite widely through the interagency with the big Q R code on it. Get them to a registration, uh, email. And then the other, the other piece is something that will be sent to them when they register. And want and need more information about evening, uh, who's speaking, what the topics are in detail. So the first one is shorter, less information, but it gives them the way to register. Then they get, um, event information. Um, if you look at the list of people who are on, or who are presenting as experts. Uh, in the area or in this field or this concern. We've got a great, we've got, we've managed to attract some really great people. Uh, several from interior health and they're really keen to be part of it. So it's, um, it started out a little bit, we were a little bit nervous, but then it just kind of opened up with the support of Donna Helgason, I must say. Um, reaching out for us. Um, so, uh, you can see that we've got seven, we've got seven speakers. And, um, so I think predominantly it'll be held in the secondary school library. We still have to approach, um, the schools to see if we can get this stuff sent out to their families. Right? So now that it's done up, this goes out to the families and then they will be more aware. Um, so we have to do that. But the. The, the concept is that everybody will be able to, or most people, even some of the presenters will come in by Zoom. Um, we'll be in the library, the library's not very big in, in the secondary school. I don't expect a lot of in-person people. So, um, what we will do is run the panel and all the presentations will, will run. Uh, people will be asked to, they'll be muted and asked to remain muted, but, uh, take notes if they have questions. And, uh, or write in the chat. And Vaughn's going to look after the chat room and I'm going to do the facilitation of the speakers. And so, uh, that's how it'll work. Um, we have the option. I've been told that if it runs a little bit over, our, our Zoom session won't immediately shut down. Um, and we're, we're recording, so. Um, we can take the questions and ask people to leave an email or a, a phone number. So that we can actually contact them, get their contact information. What, what Siobhan and I decided would, would be best would be that there, the, um, people, uh, phoning in or zooming in. Anonymous, if they wish to be, they don't have to be, they can sign in by their name. But if they wish to be anonymous, then they can participate and ask their questions or ask for help if that's the case. Uh, in an anonymous way. And I feel that that's really important to all of the education that we're doing.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, and I don't know Vaughn and Pam for taking this on, you know, when, when this was passed down to us. And we decided to, um, put bylaws in place, criminalization of illicit drugs in our parks. This didn't come with, uh, education. It was just handed down saying, this is, you know, what we're going to do as of January thirty-first. There was no education attached to it. And Sickmo stepped up and went, no, you know what, this isn't going to work for us in our parks. And we did what we thought was right for the safety of our community. We're just taking this a step forward and being such community trendsetters. Now you're taking that piece that we've already voted on and put bylaws in. But now you're taking that piece out to our community and you're educating our community and bringing them together. So hats off to both of you. This is a great project and, uh, fully, we support, the district supports it, of course. It is in your portfolios and I think the resource center is.
Resource center is sponsoring it.
Yeah. But thank you both very much. It's a lot of work and it, it looks like it's going to be a great program, so thanks.
I, I just want to say, Madam Mayor, that in your media responses, I was inspired. To, to be able to say that it is the education piece that we can do here in this, you know. We may not have the answers, we may not, you know. Um, be able to do some of the other stuff that people would like us to do, but we can do the education piece in this town. The community can, and the community can learn, be more aware and be more supportive of people who need help.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. But thanks to council, because collaborative.
Yes, absolutely.
We brought it together and we made it work, right? So that's perfect. Thank you so much. Counselor Rich?
Just add on to what Pam was saying, um, so this is, it's education awareness. We're trying to bring interior health and other, um, stakeholders in together. And hopefully have them start collaborating and, and moving forward to, to bringing awareness to our province. And how we're managing the drug crisis. Um, and then. Pam and I are also looking at doing like kind of an October thing that's going to be kind of the next level. Um, and hopefully Pam and I are sitting in, in the back row and, um. Our leaders are, um, taking this on, but we're, we're trying to get everyone, like the, the stakeholders in this. To come together, because they haven't been brought together either. I think a lot of people have been left holding the bag, not just Sickmo's. So this is kind of our step to say, let's get on it.
I think, yeah, can I, um, just add to that too? Um, I agree, there's too many people working in silos and as, and I think this is brilliant, bringing them all together. When, and I said this to Malcolm today, when I met with the conservation officer and met all five of them in here, I said, you know, the best plan for you guys. Is to go meet Murray at the, with the R C M P and start working with Murray. And I brought John into the meeting. If everyone is talking together and singing off the same song sheet, it certainly makes our jobs easier. But as council, I think that's sort of our mandate, is to bring everyone together, get rid of the silos and start communicating as, as one unit, so. Um, Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to commend Pam and, and Siobhan on, on a great job in a very short timeframe. And very professional and very well organized. And I think Counselor Rich is right, uh, I think. To have created a model that the government is going to adopt and probably roll out across the province.
Perfect, perfect, trendsetters. You are leaders. Go ahead, Pam Beach.
To the chair, I just, I want to, um, I want to just point out that. The professionalism that was done by Eagle Valley Communities. Cause I'm not capable of this level. Um, so yes, they, uh, Janet, uh, was a, and was a huge help in putting this together. In a format that looked so great and, and helped with the editing. And Heather O'Brien helped with the barcode and stuff, because neither one of us are tech nut up there. So Eagle Valley Community Support Society actually put this piece together. We just took them in a structure and they are totally supporting what we're doing here. Um, so yeah, I can't take the credit for how professional it looks. That is, that is Janet and Heather at the Support Society. Yeah, so, um. Yeah, I, I just want to just go back to an experience, the experience at the health summit that I, I shared with you. That everyone is so frustrated at the lack of working together and the detachment between levels. Uh, of, of our structure, our system, that when this started to just come together, it was like a landslide. It was like the enthusiasm and it, it took a week or so, but it just, everybody wanted to be a part of it. The school district has got their counselor, you know, their consultant in there. The schools, everybody, and you can see that we've got Lori is on side, Lori Weber is going to be on as well. And, yeah, it's really heartwarming, because that was the message that came out of that health summit in January. Is that we are so fragmented and we're not working together and there is no connection. And when we save what is needed, it never gets to the ministry, it never actually gets translated. Um, and it doesn't come from close to home. So what we've done is we've taken all of those people. To bring them together and they are close to home, so they can actually.
Thanks, yes.
Teach us.
Absolutely. Thank you. I just have, um, I just have, uh, Counselor Evans that wants to, Counselor Evans?
Uh, sorry, my hand wasn't up. I'm ready to share when it's my turn, but I wasn't trying to ask a question.
You're okay?
Oh, good.
Okay, Counselor Rich?
Just also wanted to add in, just in case someone noticed, um, we have asked for a First Nations representative, um, on this topic. Um, and we have set aside a time, time allotment.
Yeah.
That person. Um, at this point, we haven't been able to, um, have someone confirm. But we have also touched on that and are hoping that we do have a representative there for that.
Yeah, excellent. And we will add them as soon as we have them. We've allotted time.
Yeah, so, perfect. Thank you. Any more comments? Thank you. Very, great job, great job. Sickmo's is always, uh, ahead of the pack. Proud to be those leaders. Okay, we have council reports now, so Counselor Rich, did you want to kick that off?
Through the chair. Um, what did I do this last while? Uh, worked on the drug awareness. Uh, piece with Pam, which has been, uh, enlightening and a bit of a struggle occasionally and a lot of reading. Did the, uh, Indigenous, uh, culture program the other day, um, and thanks to Shawna Cole, that was really well done. Really good training. Um, I did the bear training here in chambers, um. Monday, was I here? Monday I was here for that. And thank you for Sarah for coming and getting us all set up for that. Uh, we had Silka and I listened to the planning meeting and my kids are getting used to focusing on that. My twelve-year-old, twelve-year-old knows so much about planning, it's crazy.
That's awesome. Future planners, that's what we need.
Yeah, we have.
Through the chair, um, yeah, it was a busy, I guess it's been a while since, uh, we got a council meeting, um, April nineteenth, I guess, uh, we had a planning and development meeting. On the nineteenth, I also attended a Caribou Recovery Program eight, uh, upstairs. Uh, found out that our Boring Glacier is now closed, going to be closed to snowmobilers, which is a good thing or a bad thing, I guess. Um, um, you know, some of the club members are a little upset, but, uh. We also heard that, uh, our Queesboulder herd is basically almost expired and, uh, there's only a few left. And they're probably going to transport those, which we kind of knew along, uh, which will, which will see what happens with Quees Mountain, where hopefully everything stays open there. But they'll be moving that herd north probably to the Bischof area, which is north of, up, uh, uh, Great Mountain, up further north. Um, April twentieth, uh, Daryl and I met, uh, with a couple of concerned residents at Two Mile. In regards to the development out there, just a little concerned about the trees being coming down, because they're kind of really big trees on the. in regards to the development out there, just a little concerned about the trees being coming down because they're kind of really big trees on the, right on the property line. So we're, uh I know that the, the machines have showed up there and they're getting ready to start taking trees down. So we're trying to navigate that um with Scott and Daryl. Uh what else do we have? Oh, also an offense, uh the developer has indicated, he didn't say he's putting up a fence, but uh you, you know, he's looking at it. So we're trying to keep, uh keep everybody happy out there. I also attended a round, uh round Shushup uh trails, round table working group meeting on the twenty-first. What else we do? Silka, Silka was pretty interesting, um that was a great, uh great session down there. I was able to attend a couple of days and to work uh on the Friday. And uh but yeah, I know it was pretty good, we attended the uh uh recovery of housing markets. What else, the economic development uh um program that they had there, that was good. And I also attended a BC assessment one. Uh Communities in Bloom, April twenty-ninth, um just wanted to thank Deb and um all the group that helped out. I also wanted to thank Brian Laberry and Claude Kylo at Twin Acres for the use of their trailers, uh dump trailers. It makes it a lot easier when we have dump trailers and uh, yeah, we had Jeff, uh old councillor Jeff Malt must come out and he helped out. And uh we had a big group of volunteers, I think there was thirty, thirty-something volunteers, thirty-six or something like that. Uh I wanna thank the staff, uh you know, everybody kind of kept their posts and Scott was out in Two Mile and uh Kelly and uh, well, just that we had all, all, lots of staff and uh it's good to see the kids there. Kind of reminded me back in the day when I was a kid and my dad used to haul me and my brothers out and we used to pick garbage in the ditch.
With cousin Moses?
Yeah, and uh, well, I was in Wataasman this week, uh they were picking garbage from Pigeon Lake all the way through to Wataasman, which is about fifty kilometers. And there was people on both sides of the ditches, I, I was amazed how many people were in the ditches, picking garbage and putting it on the side of the road. So that was good, uh so and thank Deb, uh Deb does a great job spearheading that and she did a great job over at the seniors. And thank the Legion for the lunch, everything was good there. Um what else we do? Uh we had step code breakfast, Scott and the crew put on step code breakfast. And then that day we had a planning uh meeting. Um Scott and Kelly and Ian and I had a zoning meeting uh on May the fourth. And then today we were at another meeting, a zoning meeting with the developers, so yeah, we've been busy, so that's, that's all I got to report.
Your stat back.
Well, just a few of the same, Southern Interior Local Government Association attended that uh planning committee. And the builders breakfast for the step code and uh I, I attended most of the cultural training.
Awesome, thank you, councillor Beach.
Um yes, uh similar, Silka, I actually did all four days. The highlight for me, I think, was the, this um water reclamation plant tour. And uh very fancy, nice, clean name for a sewage treatment plant. But um that was very, very inspiring. Um they're moving in the direction of renewable energy in one, a new facility where they'll take their, take it and they'll use it to heat. And produce energy, so it was quite, uh it was also, I found out that they partner with Colona to compost the, the solids. So there were some things that, yeah, I learned about that I thought were really innovative and I wish we were big enough to do the same thing. Um so that was, I, I really enjoyed that. And uh let me see, I, other than that, it was a planning committee meeting. Um I did take that in by Zoom. And um the cultural education uh that we just had. So and, and a retreat and strategic planning session with my own organization, which, you know, sort of overlaps a little bit on, on all the stuff that we do. Yeah, uh that's all I can uh think, remember.
Thanks councillor Beach. Councillor Evans, let's go up to you before we go to councillor Bailey.
Hi there, yeah, I uh enjoyed attending the Southern Interior Local Government Association Conference in Vernon. And uh I took quite a few seminars that really taught a lot of good stuff about taxation, trying to understand that better. And uh a good seminar on the environment, and this is my first point today is, it really uh struck home that, you know, with all the rain that we've had this spring and the snow that's been in the mountains, we're still gonna be facing um quite a hot summer and uh the key is to be thinking about water conservation. So I have uh, um I'm an old dog's learning new tricks. Just wet the toothbrush, shut the water off, brush your teeth, because I mean, if you let that water run as long as you brush your teeth, it's amazing how many pitchers of water you'll fill up and uh we wanna conserve that because it's gonna be a hot summer. And with a lot of people in our population probably tripling in the summertime, it's, it's very important uh for our community to conserve our water. So I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing that I wanted to highlight that I picked up was um, if anyone in town is uh, you know, internet's important. I've, I've had students show up when the hub is closed, sitting at the picnic table so they can use the internet to, to do things. And uh if you can't afford internet, nothing to be ashamed of. There is a great thing that TELUS is doing called Mobility for Good, that will uh, will give you next to nothing internet. So you can um have that for your family, it's important. And uh and the other thing is, I just wanted to, I had a lot of conversations at the conference with people that were um in the same job as us. And uh thank you um councillor for the, the decision, I think, to protect people um about drug use in the parks and stuff like that. And, and uh Mayor Colleen, your statements on the news were really good, but we were able to help other towns um by taking the stand we did. At the same time, I just wanna balance out that um we, we don't want anybody to feel bad about something they're struggling with in, in terms of drugs. Tell somebody, get some help, it's very important. And um, and you know, we all struggle with something. And uh you know, I struggle with the food addiction myself, I have to work on that for myself, for my health. So you know, it's important that we um, we say that, you know, talk to a friend, get some help, it's out there. Um tell somebody and, and don't, don't be alone because we're losing too many people, thank you.
Thanks councillor Evans, councillor Bailey?
Okay, it'll be really quick, a lot of planning and development meetings and um Silka, I think no one's mentioned that our resolutions all passed us. Oh, you were going to mention, I'm sorry to uh. Under?
Nope, not at all.
Well, one was controversial-ish, but uh at the end of the day, it prevailed. Uh you, uh I think very sensible uh resolution to ask the province to step up and do their jobs when they actually put rules and regulations in place, which I think is reasonable. And um yeah, just really focusing on a lot of planning and development, really at this point.
Awesome, thank you. Um I'll be quick, uh I, I have, uh yeah, there's quite a few things on my, my to-do list. I met with Sergeant McNeil uh a couple of weeks ago, just, just to discuss this plan with Sekamos and suggested that um for busy, long weekends, we have more boots on the street. So just so that the RCMP can interact with the community, because I think that bond is very important, that people, that our community gets to know the RCMP. I attended a CSRD Shushup Executive Meeting, uh I've been to, nothing big came out of that. The Chamber AGM was last week, some new board members uh were elected. And congratulations to Sam Dunnett, who is the new president, so uh we will be working with the, to Sam, with Sam as the president of the chambers. Or so, that's pretty exciting and good for, good for Sam. Uh I went to the municipal directors' meeting and so that's mayors with uh municipalities. And we discussed a lot about sharing, sharing resources. So you know, we've, we've fought a bit with sweepers this past season, which we do every spring, it seems. So you know, we've got some ideas of how maybe we can move forward and check into other things to, to share as well as building inspectors and things like that and just kind of group resources and, and share them. So um that was really good, uh attended a CSRD board meeting. Uh that was, there was nothing earth-shattering that came out of that. Silka, I'm happy with the resolutions, I do, all three of them did pass. I want to be, I wanna specifically um thank councillor Beach, you did an amazing job on speaking to our resolution. Councillor McCabe, you did a great job speaking to our resolution, a couple of times, you had to. I, I love the way, I love the way you have to get back up there and go, oh, no, no, I need, that was perfect, thank you so much. And councillor Bushel, you did a great job of speaking to our resolution, so you know what, and you're right, one we just snuck by. But I mean, we, all of our resolutions were um, were moved forward. And I think we're resolution kings here in Sekamos, not only leaders, we're kings of resolutions. Had an interview with the Rural Coordination of BC um healthcare in regards to our award. And we're a very unique community, again, you know, I can't say this enough, here we are leading the pack again uh with our, owning our own healthcare facility, purchasing it and moving forward with it. And that's pretty exciting and people are looking, looking to Sekamos to see how, you know, how, how we're doing that and how we manage to move it through the processes. And so we shared, uh shared some information on that. Uh I went to the mayors and chairs seasonal preparedness uh and there was a lot of talk about climate change. And to councillor Evans' point, we're tender dry. So um we have right now uh communications, Nicole's working on some social media with communications, watch your butts, um which kind of a little play on words, kind of funny, but anyway, watch your butts. Uh mind your campfires, mind any fires, make sure you have hoses and water buckets if you're burning anything and don't leave fires unattended. I mean, these are common sense things, but you know what, we forget and we, we do need to be reminded. I'm arranging a meeting uh hopefully in the next week or two with Active Tac and COC just so that I can share our strategic priorities with them. Again, I wanna take those three silos that we have and I wanna bring us all together, all working together and singing off the same song sheet. So that's was part of my mandate running for mayor, so I just, I wanna make sure that we're communicating and working together and we all know our lanes and how we can build active tourism and our businesses together with the, with the council and the chamber. Um I'd like to thank Gord, Deb for um community cleanup, all the volunteers, you guys did a great job, thank you so much for all of that. Um I think that that is just about it for me. Yeah, it's, it's been very busy, so I'm ready, we're ready to take some questions from the gallery. None, we're resi- ready to take some, some Zoom questions. Debbie, go ahead, Deb. Deb?
Uh it's a, it's a false alarm, maybe.
Are you on mute?
Yes.
Maybe that was earlier.
No, there we go. Hey Deb, you there? Deb? Just give her a minute to. Okay, while we're waiting for Deb, does anyone else have any questions? Hey, maybe we won't be waiting for Deb. Are we going into recess, are we going to adjourn?
We adjourn and then go into regular council.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've got that here.
But I don't need to do it right now, do I? And then go right into regular council and recess? Hey, Deb, you there?
Yes, but no.
Yes, she is, but no, and she's trying so hard and her, she's, I, like, I can feel, I can feel her energy right now.
I have been there, we're talking about her, oh, I see your face, oh, there's still sound.
Okay, we can see you, we can see you, Deb, can you hear us?
Someone FaceTimed her. Is she saying, forget it, or what is she saying? She's, she is, don't worry about it, maybe.
Yeah, okay.
Saying, don't worry about it.
Deb, we'll catch you next time. But thank you for all your hard work with the community cleanup and your volunteers. Okay, recommendation that committee of the whole for May tenth, twenty twenty-three, be adjourned at three twenty. Councillor Beach, councillor McCabe, all in favor? Hey, we are done.